... meeting, and I think we do, we've got Counselor Pillsbury, Counselor Lawrence, Counselor Daniele, Counselor Bradley, Vice Chair Counselor Egan, and Chair Pilchus here as well, so we've got six counselors, which is enough for a quorum. And the first item on our agenda, as always, is the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join me in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on the nation, on the God, and to his goal with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next up, our second order of business is to waive the reading of the minutes from our last meeting, nine dash twenty-three, held on May 2nd, and to accept them as printed. They came in a little bit late this week, so if you guys are comfortable waiving and accepting, we can do that, or we can delay until next meeting. All right? Thank you, Counselor Bradley and Counselor Lawrence. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor of approving them as printed?
I'm abstaining, I wasn't here last week.
Abstaining, so we've got five in favor. We want abstention, so that carries, we have approved minutes.
You want a second, am I right?
I do have some announcements tonight, looks like I've got four announcements. The first one is about a budget meeting for the school. The regional school unit budget meeting will be held on May 24th at 6:30 PM at the Durham Community School, at 654 Howell Road in Durham, for the purpose of determining the budget to be voted on by residents on Tuesday, June 13th. The Budget Validation Election location is the Freeport High School, 30 Holbrook Street, withholding hours from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. In-person absentee voting will begin on Thursday, May 25th. So again, the budget meeting is on May 24th, at 6:30 in Durham. Secondly, the town of Freeport has volunteer opportunities for people who have talents and interest in serving on the Board of Appeals, the Board of Assessment Review, and the Cable Regulatory Committee. We also have one opening for a student representative on the Police Advisory Committee. Applications are available on the town website and at Town Hall. The library had a tremendous turnout for the Freeport Breaks the Silence Film Screening and Discussion Event on May 10th. Sixty-five people gathered to hear stories of abuse, survival, recovery, and resilience. It was by far one of their most successful programs in several years. Library staff and finding our voices thanked the council on over 125 Freeport businesses and organizations for such enthusiastic support. And lastly, we have shellfish licenses. The town of Freeport will have commercial shellfish licenses available by lottery for one resident commercial adult license and four resident commercial student licenses. Applications for the lottery can only be accepted starting Thursday, June 1st, 7:30 AM, until Thursday, June 15th, at 6:00 PM. That's all I've got for announcements, are there any other announcements from the council?
Should we announce the, thank you. Should we announce the town budget workshop and hearing dates?
Yeah, it's a good idea to remind people, we do have, tonight we'll be doing a workshop, which is mostly council discussion, at the end of the meeting, but of course, there are usually some comments as well from the public, but we do have an official public hearing on the budget, all of our budgets, on June 6th, which is our next meeting, which is, I believe, three weeks from tonight, but that's the good time for the public to come and comment on the budget before we vote on it, which will be at the subsequent meeting, which I believe is June 21st or so. Both those should be Tuesday dates, if I have them right. Other announcements? Nope? Okay, item number four, information exchange. Time for counselors to exchange information with each other, and anybody who's listening about committees, boards, and other goings-on, Counselor Bradley.
So, this, on the 13th, as District Two Counselor, I met with the Wolfneck Club and the Thomas Means Club for a supper at the Wolfneck Club. There were probably forty people in attendance, it was a good turnout. What I talked to them about, and what they were interested in hearing about, was the town budget and its implications for taxpayers, the increases for taxpayers. Suggestion to them that, not encouragement, but a suggestion, that there was a time coming up for their input, if they were at all interested in what I had to say. And also the intersection of the town budget with the vision. So I discussed in, you know, I didn't have much time, but in some detail in answering, particularly to questions, the charter projects, and, you know, they were interested. So we'll see whether that develops any inputs or not. But it was a good meeting, and I think they were grateful that the council reached out to inform them. The second thing I'd like to share is that the Transportation Committee, that is loosely formed as a charter group to talk about transportation alternatives in the downtown and to the outside assets, has been meeting, and on Thursday at nine o'clock at the Town Hall, there will be a meeting of what we're calling stakeholders, meaning people who we think will be most directly impacted by either the existence or nonexistence of such a system, to get their ideas on whether they think it's a good idea, if they do, what they think the parameters of it should be, the scope of it. They were told that there was $10,000 in the budget, but that it needed to be spent by June 23rd, the end of the fiscal year, and they will also be discussing whether to come back to the council and asking to, they're not going to finish their work, or get the help, if they decide they need help, they're not going to get it by the 23rd, we're just, we're just delayed. So they will be talking about that and making a determination as to whether to come back to the council and asking that that $10,000 be shifted into the next fiscal year, as opposed to going to reserve. And then, the last piece of information, and I hesitate to call it information, but it is, I received a phone call this afternoon from Lee Aris, the Executive Director of the SEOR Committee, to let me know that there is really good news, that they have received an initial indication that their money that they've gotten from rural development, or requested from rural development, is going to be approved, and they are waiting for the details, and they were looking forward to an opportunity to come in and talk to the council about what it means to their budget, what it means to the recommendations that we have for working with them, and seeing how we go forward, given that it's now a reality, rather than, you know, a possibility. So I don't have any details, so it's, in that sense, it's not information, but he was excited, I was excited for him and his excitement, and so he's, he's just touching base, he doesn't want us to be the last to know, but he also doesn't want us to be the first to tell everybody else, so leave it there. Those are my reports.
Sounds good. Is that a can from Counselor Lawrence, or was that just a, no, okay, I thought I saw movement. Counselor Egan?
A couple of things. On May 3rd, right after our last meeting, the Housing Committee had an informal workshop with the Planning Board, and the Housing Committee presented a bunch of recommendations to the Planning Board of its initial review of ordinance language, and sparked a good conversation with much more to come. So it was great to see that underway, and a productive conversation about parking and density, and allowable uses, and areas of the town that could sustain more housing and areas of the town that can't, et cetera. Also, last night I attended a Climate Action Planning Workshop, sponsored beautifully by our Sustainability Committee, and our new Sustainability Coordinator was introduced to the community, and that was in partnership with GP COG as a member organization, we get a lot of services from GP COG. I thought the workshop was excellent, and it was very interactive, it was very reminiscent of the workshops that we had a year and a half, two years ago, for downtown visioning. It was participatory, people walked around, found out more about the town maybe than they knew before they came in, and got some ideas about where, where some of their values are, about what we should be concerned about as the climate changes. So it was a really healthy workshop, and there'll be another one coming this fall, so it was great to see that last night. And then I just happened to be on, for my work, I happened to be on a webinar this afternoon, it was about revitalization efforts in small cities in Maine, and one of the presenting communities was Westbrook, and Westbrook, I didn't know this, has a sculpture garden. Westbrook has a whole program where they do murals on the sides of, of large buildings to break up the mass. Westbrook has a Riverwalk, so it was, anyway, it's just great to see that other communities are engaged in this, and they all talked about having a good plan with positive community interaction, it made me feel good about our downtown revision plan, and how much public input we've had on that, and how much more we still have to go, so it's good.
Thank you. Counselor Daniele?
At the last meeting, I mentioned the possibility of a Start Summit, sponsored by the RU Institute, coming to Freeport, I'm happy to say that that's moving forward. So these are events that participate, free to participants, it's a Friday night into a Saturday day event. Participants will experience what it's like to build a nonprofit or for-profit startup solution. The theme is going to be on regenerative entrepreneurship. Regenerative entrepreneurship basically creates businesses and organizations that give back more to society than, and the planet than what they take from it, and so the theme, like the challenge itself, is how might we enhance Freeport's community fabric using regenerative principles? So I think it ties in nicely with the work that we're doing on the downtown, I think it's pretty open and broad, so somebody could tackle empty storefronts, or, you know, an app to connect people, like any theme that we talk about, I think, fits nicely in here. The ask right now from, is to get partners together, so for instance, RSU5, Freeport Community Services, Wolfneck Center, Freeport Can, The Grange, and Meeting House Arts are all partners. So there's an opportunity for the town to be a partner as well. Being a partner is not a financial obligation, it's really just sharing the event, making sure that people know about it. So if that's, you know, if I get some head nods or anything from the council, that that's something that we would be interested in, I'd be happy to pass that along.
Not again. Yeah, that's a great idea. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Jake. Other information exchange items? I've got one, brief one, you probably all have seen in the mailing that you got from the transfer station from the town. In addition to that important information, there's also a survey from our relatively new Police Advisory Committee. They were interested in just hearing from residents what they thought of our police department, how often you want to hear from them or about them, and generally, any feedback you have. There's a QR code if you want to take it online, there's a paper copy that was mailed out, which you can drop here in Town Hall, or if you didn't get one, you can stop by Town Hall and grab one, or see me and I'll email you one. That's all the information exchange I have, so if there, no, I do have one more, we have an invitation to somebody who approached us and wanted to make a presentation to us. So we have Mr. McDonald here to make a presentation about flags, a flag.
Sorry, can you go to the microphone, so everybody online can hear you?
Yeah, or you can, you can bring them, you can grab the handheld microphone right there at your waist, either that one, if you want to clip it on, or that one, if you want to hold it, and then you can be at your laptop or at the podium.
It's not, it's not audio in the room, it's for online.
All right. So, for the, about, sorry, so, sorry, sorry. So about a month ago, I decided to start designing a flag for Freeport. I don't know why, I just decided to have the idea one day, and yeah. So this is the flag. It represents the culture of Freeport, and as well as the nature and attractiveness, which has to do with, you know, just the pine tree and all that other stuff, which is explained here. The pine tree, it explains itself, there's a lot of pine trees around, it's a very pine tree, there's a lot of pine trees around, yeah. The blue represents the Herseckert River, as well as Casco Bay, and the green represents Wolfneck Woods and the Mass Landing Audubon. So why did I do this? So I thought that having a flag would be extremely useful, because it can be a symbol for our town and make it much more recognizable. I believe that if Freeport were to have a flag, it could boost our reputation by a long shot, because there are really not many neighboring towns that have one, and it would really just be a cool thing to have. I believe that symbolism is a really important thing, and every community should have one. For example, the city of Bath is a flag which designed in 2013 by somebody who lived in the city, and is now a pretty recognizable city for them. If you've ever been to Bath, you can see that they have a lot of, just they have flags of Bath hanging from a lot of houses, and they even have bumper stickers. Ah, my grandma has one. So what I want to see happen for this flag, is I would like to put together, maybe put together a flag committee, if it's not too much trouble, with a willing town council member, I don't really know how this would work, but how I think it might work, any willing residents and myself, and together, we could probably make this happen. So in summary, I believe that my flag design should be adopted by the town of Freeport, however long it may take. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks for that, inspirational, and timely, too. We have, coming up in the next six months or a year, we have a sign redesign project coming along to redesign our blue and greenish signs throughout town, and part of that might be new thoughts on an identity for the town, which might include a flag as well, so when that gets off the ground, I think it would be a good idea to let you know about it, see if you want to participate in that, bring your flag design with you. Yeah, thank you.
Stick around, Ethan, thanks.
And we have one other sort of invitation for information exchange, we have somebody from the Gulf of Maine Research Institute, they are running a project here in Freeport and other towns, and they wanted to tell us about it, so I think they're here online. If you are, you're, yeah, feel free to take it away.
Hello, my name's Abigail Long, I'm a resilience fellow at the Gulf of Maine Research Institute, so I'm here to introduce and inform you of our coastal flooding community science project. So we recently expanded that to all of coastal Cumberland County, which includes Freeport, of course, and so this project is a community or citizen science project that asks participants, so anyone of any background, to make observations of coastal flooding at select monitoring sites in the participating towns, which allows for greater understanding of communities' flood risks, vulnerabilities, and forms of emergency management, and it's just a great tool to teach about sea level rise. So we've been working with Caroline and Cecilia, the town planners, to choose these monitoring sites settled on Winslow Park, South Freeport Town Wharf, and Porter's Landing, so these will be sites that'll be consistently monitored. And then we have created signs that we would like to put up at these sites, that would include information about the project, as well as a photo, and with your approval, the Freeport Town Local, logo. And then our final, my final plug is that we're hosting an engagement workshop, May 31st, it'll be virtual, from 6:00 to 7:30, and then we have another one in person, June 7th, from 3:30 to 5:30, and these are for community groups, committees, or organizations that want to learn more about hosting events and engagement around the project. So Caroline has all the details for that, as well as my email, if you want any more questions.
Thank you, Abigail. Anybody on the council have questions for Abigail?
Are we being asked to do something?
It was more of a, just an FYI, they've been working on this project in association with GP COG, it's a great way to get, take the data we see in all these plans and see what the conditions look like on the real world, so they're going to be looking for community members to go out and take pictures, we'll have access to the data, we can use it to feed into the Climate Action Plan and the Comp Plan. They are putting it on public sites, and like I said, they wanted to make sure that the council was kind of supportive before they put the seal, so it's more of a FYI to keep you all in the loop, so you'd all know what was going on if you weren't able to be there last night and meet Abigail in person. Get your cameras ready.
So I heard signs mentioned, are they asking us to approve the placement of signs?
No, it's just an FYI, just to keep you in the loop.
If it's, what I think it is, I tried it out, and you go to their website, you sign up with your name and email, and they say you can go to Porter's Landing or Wolfneck or, or anywhere else, if you want to do an independent one, but those are the areas they're focusing on?
Yeah, they needed to find public sites that people could access, which you know in Freeport's Limited, so they talked during some of the climate action planning work with department heads, they spent a lot of time with Neil and Charlie Tetro to see where they're really observing impacts to flooding, and based upon that input, they came up with these three sites that they feel like we see impacts, so they'll be able to take that data, they're also measuring the tide off the coast and see what it really means to the impacts during these storm events.
And they want you to go during high tide and take pictures and answer a few questions?
Yeah, during storms, yeah, so they can see like what the tide was, what the wind speed, how much rain, and to see, put it all together and see what that actually meant down at the Harbor Masters Station, for example, or at Winslow Park.
Is it close to shore, so you can see it, or is it out, do you think you could use a boat to go see it?
Nope, you should all be able to do it all from, all from land, the signs will be there, it's all town property, we didn't want to encourage going on private property, although if you own waterfront and you have flooding conditions or severe weather conditions, I'm sure they'd take that data as well.
What's the website?
Abigail, do you want to give your website?
Yeah, so if you look up the Ecosystem Investigation Network with the Gulf of Maine Research Institute, it will come up, and there's a bunch of projects on there, and it's the coastal flooding project. And I can send the link, I don't know if I can send it.
Is it addressed in there?
You had a sheet in your packet, and we can forward that to the council if you're interested in participating, or if you just look up Gulf of Maine Research Institute, it will come up.
Okay.
I read the URL, but it's pretty long.
How about just the initial one?
Investigate.gmri.org slash project slash coastal underscore flooding, but gmri.org is probably where I'd start, and then search for coastal flooding.
It can get hidden sometimes, so I would suggest looking up the Ecosystem Investigation Network.
Ecosystem.
And hopefully that will pop up.
Got it. Super. Any questions for Abigail? Awesome. Thanks for joining, thank you to GMRI for running the project, look forward to seeing what the survey results say.
Thank you.
All right. Any other information exchange items pop up in the meantime? If not, then we're on to our fifth order of business, which is our Town Managers' Report.
So in exciting news, we have a Memorial Day Parade this year, thanks to Judy Holly, Dan, I believe Tony, there's been a group that have been meeting to pull this event off. It'll be Monday, May 29th, it will start at 10:00 AM on Holbrook Street, head north on Main, right on school, and then there'll be a ceremony at Memorial Park, right next to the Hilton Garden Inn, following the school's music programs, will be participating in both the parade and the ceremony at the park. As Dan already hinted, it's spring cleanup time, people should have gotten a mailer about spring cleanup. Spring cleanup events at the transfer station will be Monday and Tuesday, June 5th and 6th, from 11:00 to 7:00. If you have questions, you can reach us at Town Hall or contact Suzanne at the transfer station. Dan also mentioned the Police Advisory Committee and their survey. If you don't have access to a computer or online, and need a copy of that survey, feel free to stop in at Town Hall, we'll print you one, there's a Dropbox that you can put completed surveys in, it's also on the town's website, under Municipal News, there's a link you can click on, and on the town's Facebook page, if you want to complete that. A couple meetings ago, you authorized us to enter into a contract with Baker Tilly to start the Town Manager Search, we have executed that contract, they wanted an abundance of information, which we have partially sent to them, and they're working on putting together their marketing materials to start their national search to find the next town manager for Freeport. By the end of the month, they will be reaching out to you guys, they want to do one-on-one counselor meetings as a step one, they want to hear from each of you, get your individual thoughts on what you're looking in for in the next candidate, what you think, so we'll be sending out a list of questions to give you a heads up, so you can think about that, and they'll also be reaching out with a time to schedule those appointments with you. As Counselor Egan mentioned, last night, FSAB with GP COG, in association with Mehdi and Cecilia, our planning staff and Sustainability Coordinator, we hosted the first of two Climate Action Planning Workshops. It was held at the Community Center, it was a hybrid meeting, they had over fifty people, which is a pretty good turnout for a town meeting on a beautiful spring night. So they got some feedback, presented some initial data that GP COG has put together in preparation of creating the Climate Action Plan. If you weren't able to attend, we will have a recording of the meeting on the town's website under Video Services. There's also a survey that you can complete to give your thoughts on climate change, we want as many opinions as we can get, and I'll source out different opinions, because that's what's going to make a good plan that reflects all our values and thoughts on climate change in Freeport. You can visit that website, www.freportclimateaction.org, you can get a link to the workshop materials on there, and you can also get a link to the survey. If you have questions, or you need assistance, or you need printed copies, stop by Town Hall, you can visit Mehdi Smith, our Sustainability Coordinator, and she'll gladly print a copy for you, if you would prefer to do it in paper. Online through the website, there is a mirror board, that's what we use during the visioning, you can go online and you can see all the boards that were there last night, if you like to comment virtually, you can do that, if you're old school like me, and you want a way to participate in paper. When you leave tonight, there's actually an exercise out in the hallway on the table, there's a map of Freeport, and they're looking for some feedback on what areas of concern there are to you in Freeport, so stop by, that's interactive activity that's set up at Town Hall. Equally exciting news, Jessica just got the first rebate for Energize Freeport, that was the program that Freeport Can, Bob and his group, put together and turned over to the town, you guys allocated funding for residents to submit for reimbursement, they also generously staffed a table at the summit last night to give people more information, so the first rebate has been granted. And then finally, GP COG and Title Bay Consulting, who's a Freeport resident, have been working with Charlie Tetro, and they want to apply for Shore and Harbor Planning Grant from the Department of Marine Resources. This is something they did a few years ago, this would be another grant, it would be up to $50,000 with an in-kind match of Charlie's time of about forty hours over the next year, and it's to study public access to the water, ways to plan to preserve those in the future, or improve public access points to the water. They don't need dollar funding, it was more of just FYI to let you know what they're working on, again, it would be partnership with GP COG and Title Bay Consulting, they would be doing it for a couple towns, and they would use some of Charlie's time, so just wanted to make the council aware of that. That's all I have.
Counselor Bradley?
Yeah, did you mention what time the parade starts?
10:00 AM.
10:00 AM on Holbrook Street.
And did you mention the amount of money that the rebate program generously awarded Freeport residents?
I do not know, Jessica just stepped out, but she could tell you that, it was one application, I'm not sure. What was the amount of that one rebate you granted?
I was the full 2,000 allowed per household.
Two K per household?
Two thousand, yeah.
And there's a, that, this is the program that had a income limitation?
Correct.
Can you remind us what that was?
Ninety percent of AMI, and based on the number that's in your household, there's a chart right on the application, so you can match what your income level is, even if it falls within that range or below, then you qualify.
Understanding, but for the people who might be looking for it, is it, can you give us a rough idea, so they'll have a rough idea of whether they, they might be qualified?
Honestly, I don't know the levels off the top of my head, I apologize.
The qualified uses for the rebate, or heat pumps and?
Heat pumps, authorization, any efficiency measures, really, anything that comes under efficiency mean.
I don't know if you mentioned about the parade, when you were mentioning the people involved, but also, we should acknowledge that Joyce Vayu and the Legion have been very helpful in organizing the parade, as they have been in many years past, and she'll be there on Memorial Day. Other questions for the manager, or the Finance Director, in the way we have them? Thank you both. We are up to our sixth order of business, which is public comment period. So the way this works, for those of you that are new, this is the time for anybody in the public to come up and address the council with thoughts that they might have, it's not a Q and A session, but it's just a time to offer your thoughts on anything that you want to talk about that's not already on the agenda. So if you're here to talk about something that's on the agenda, we ask that you wait till that item comes up, but if you're here to talk about something that we didn't include on our agenda, step on up to the podium, tell us who you are, where you're from, and what you want to say, and we ask you to limit your comments to three minutes, if you have any. And if you're on Zoom and you want to say something, raise your virtual hand and we'll find you, and if you're in the room, just step on up to the podium.
I'm stepping up.
Thank you.
I'm Margaret Morfit, and I and Kathy Hi are co-chairs of
I'm Margaret Morfit and I and Kathy Hi are co-chairs of the Freeport Farmers Market. And I thought I'd just give you an update on how we're doing this year. I don't know how many of you came to the market last year, which was right across the driveway, which, that's the land that's now under contract, but it was a great place for a farmer's market and it was, for a first year, really successful. We had 12 to 16 vendors every week and we had sometimes as many as 400 people come, so that was a good-sized crowd. It was very liked by the community, both for the reason that they could buy locally, but also because it was kind of a community center for four hours every week. People got to see each other and they hadn't done that before. So it was, we were really proud of the way it went for that very first year. So now this year, we can't be on that side again, so thanks to the town, we're moving over to Memorial Park. And I think that'll be a great place to be. It's leafy. That's really important to the farmers because they're afraid their vegetables will wilt in the sun, so this gives them a chance to be undercover. And the good news is all the farmers are coming back. There are some, almost all of the people are coming back. So whereas last year we had 12 to 16 vendors, this year we have 22 to 25 seasonal vendors who will be there every, every week. And there'll be three to four day tables. Those are people who come sporadically on a schedule, but they don't come every week. And so that's a crowd. And then we also have a table always for nonprofits. So it could be community services or Meeting House or anybody who needs it. They get a chance to be there and tell about what they're interested in. And so it will be a crowd and it will really fill that lot, I think. We're very lucky in that the Hilton Inn has agreed to let us use their parking lot, which without that would be very hard. We really need to have parking for people. And I think, and we can't have food trucks this year because Hilton doesn't want them. We had food trucks last year. But we do have electricity, which means that we'll have music, which is better. That's, last year we had music, nobody could hear it. So I think you probably all also know that this was a project suggested to us, us being Freeport Climate Action Now, by the town, because Visit Freeport didn't want to take it on and the town wanted someone to do it. And it's a really good fit for us. It's, it's talking about eating locally. It's talking about supporting our local farmers and also not driving anywhere. So it makes lots of sense for us and we're really grateful we're doing it. It is a lot of volunteer hours and we really hope that we'll have enough money for an intern this year. But one way or another, we hope you won't forget to support us and we're grateful for the support you've given us so far. So thanks.
Thanks, Margaret. Thanks for all the work for the market, too. I love it. Can't wait to go back. Questions? Yeah.
Do we have any data on sales for last year? What the economic impact was to the farmers and the participants?
Could somebody pass, can somebody pass Margaret the microphone so she doesn't keep on going back? Or just go back up there?
I don't, I have no idea what you're making. I know, you know, once in a while, some farmer would say to me, I made $1,000 today, but that's a big day for them. And we never asked them specifically what they made day to day. I know roughly what we spent and we sold occasionally stuff like t-shirts and things like that. But the numbers I have are for overall, all, so social media, signs, paying, paying the people we had to pay along the way. So it cost us around 5,000 last year. This year, we'd like an intern and we'd like to be able to pay more musicians, so we have more musicians. So we're looking for more than that, but we're, you know, it's a nonprofit. We're not trying to make money. We're just trying to make it good. Next year, I'll try and find that out. It's a good number to know. I don't know it now. Okay? Anybody else?
Markets are Friday mornings again?
Friday mornings, starting June 16th, from 9 to 1. Come and see. It's really fun.
Councilor Bradley.
So do the vendors pay anything or is it free to them?
No, it's not free to them. They pay 150.
Could you go back? Sorry.
Trying to be quicker, thinker.
Be quicker with your questions. The vendors pay 150 a season and seasonal people, our day table people pays $15 a table. So it's not a lot for them, but it's still, for some of them, it's a real stretch. It's not, it's not easy. So that's it.
Other questions before Margaret steps away?
Ready?
I'm going to wait till you sit down and then think of a question. All right, we are still in our public comment period, so if there's anybody else who wants to step up, Ms. Watson?
Suzanne Watson, 21 Carriage Road, Freeport, Maine, also here on Meeting House Arts, but not on the item on the agenda. I just wanted to make note to everyone that in the next week or so, you'll be seeing art in the empty storefront windows. The gallery at Meeting House Arts is going to, they've already gotten quite a number of large colorful paintings that they're going to actually put, put on easels in the various windows, specific to the loft building now, which is adjacent to the gallery. But we're going to have, hopefully other storefronts may see this and see it as a positive for the town. It's a way for us to sort of make the empty storefronts look a little more happy, colorful, enticing and such. So I want to thank Josh Soli, in particular at this stage of the game. He stepped forward and said he was happy to offer his storefront windows as a start, but I really hope we find other landlords in town who have empty storefronts who would like to see this happen as well. So that's it.
Thank you. Selfishly, I hope you don't find a lot of landlords with empty storefronts, but if there are, I hope they come to you. Anybody else want to come up and say a public comment or two? Mr. Stevens?
Bob Stevens, 50, Moose Crossing. To answer Ed's question about the, the income level, it's for a person, one-person household would be below $70,380. Two goes up to 80, four 60, three 95, 40, four 100, five 30, five 108, 630, six 116, 100, seven 124, 650, and eight 132, 705. That's as far as we figured it out.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, I think we've got somebody in Zoom land who has a hand up, so I can't.
It's John O'Brien.
John O'Brien. When you're ready, feel free to offer your comment.
Yeah, hey, joining a little late. I, I've got a, I guess, I have a comment, if this is the appropriate time, about the stretch code, or are we going to start a public hearing at some point about that, where the comments come in?
That is on our agenda coming up pretty soon, so if you stand by for maybe five or 10 minutes, then we'll have a public hearing at that. So hold your comment for that, if you don't mind.
Perfect. Thanks.
Anybody else in the room or on Zoom who wants to talk about anything other than the agenda? Anybody else on Zoom?
No other hands up.
Okay. So seeing no more comments, we'll move to our seventh order of business. This is the order where we take action on all the things. This is where we do all the voting. We have three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, about 10 items to vote on. Just to preview the rest of the agenda, after that, we'll have a workshop on the budget, the operating budget, mostly a council discussion on the details of the budget. And then we have a, an executive session after all that's over for some real estate stuff. But the first item on our action section is our consent agenda. So this is to consider action relative to adopting our consent agenda, which has three items on it. We have some donations, we have a resignation, and we have a liquor license renewal. Is there any reason why we need to deal with these separately rather than as one consent agenda? Seeing none, Councilor Pillsbury, would you want to read our consent agenda item?
Sure. Be it ordered that the May 16th, 2023 consent agenda be adopted?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Lawrence. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Well, in favor of adopting the consent agenda?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? I think that was six to zero, so that is adopted. And we move on to item 95-23, which is to consider action relative to amendments to the Building Code Ordinance to adopt stretch energy codes that will be effective July 1st of this year. So we'll have a public hearing and then we'll bring it up for council discussion after that. And then there is a motion to vote to adopt them tonight for July 1st deadline. Is there any background you want to offer before we open the public hearing?
Sure. So just say, as a reminder, a couple months ago, the council took action and made an amendment to the administrative code that lists the codes that our code enforcement officer is going to enforce. And so you added the stretch code into the administrative code for enforceable ordinances at that point of time. The second document we have is a Building Code Ordinance that lists the codes that Freeport has adopted. So to make the two mirror and to be very clear what codes we're using in Freeport, you have amendments before you. In here, you'll see some language of the, listing all the codes that we already had forced in the administrative code into here and then also adding the stretch code. The stretch code is an optional code that municipalities can choose to adopt that have higher standards to make our buildings more energy efficient and sustainable and resilient. So you already did part of it a couple months ago. Here before you, you have the second ordinance to make them aligned. I did at the last meeting, we had a code update from our code officer, who had talked to the state building official on which codes the state's going to adopt. I did have a meeting with Bob Stevens and Naomi Beal from Freeport Can. Naomi generously reached out to the head of the MUBEC Board and they didn't really want to go on record stating which codes, because there's a whole bunch of different options and they don't know for sure what code they're going to adopt yet and they didn't want to cause confusion. Our code officer had gotten a little bit more specific information about a couple of different options, but really at the end of the day, we don't know for a fact at this point in time what codes and exactly when the state will adopt new codes. So again, if you adopt this, it will just align with the other ordinance that you already adopted, what we're enforcing. It will be effective July 1. If the state chooses to adopt new codes, which we think they are, we will have to revisit that. We'll have to update our ordinances. If there's a different stretch code at that point in time, we will have to revisit that.
Got it. Any questions before I go to public comment? We'll have time for funny questions later.
It seems like we're putting the cart before the horse. If that's, if the state's not adopting them now or they're going to adopt at a later time and then we're going to have to revisit this again.
Regardless, you're going to have to revisit the codes again if the state mandates. By adopting this, I think you're being a leader, you know, for sustainability and joining a couple other municipalities, notably Portland and South Portland, who have already adopted the stretch code and there are a couple of other municipalities that are debating as well.
All right, let's do the public hearing first. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilor Daniele.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Lawrence. Sound in favor? Six to zero, we are now in a public hearing. So if you want to talk about stretch codes, now is the time to talk about stretch codes. Ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, just so that we can move on with our agenda. But if anybody wants to talk, Mr. O'Brien, you were patiently waiting in Zoom land. If you want to kick things off, you're welcome to.
Yeah, thanks so much. So I've been participating with Freeport Can, trying to, you know, increase the sustainability in Freeport. I'm actually Brunswick resident, full disclosure, but my kids go to school in Freeport. I'd love to live in Freeport. We're renting right now, but, you know, it's just, we, we need to, we need to have more efficient buildings. I would, if I were to build, I'd build well beyond what the stretch code would require. The stretch code is really a baby step from where we're currently at. I think it's the least we can do and I think we can feel really good doing it. I think, you know, we'd be able to say, we, we did our part to help the climate crisis. We did our part to reduce emissions in our small way in our community and it's, it's going to benefit the residents of those homes. It's going to, you know, save them money, make them a little bit more comfortable. And I, I really support getting in on this at this time, being a leader and just, you know, showing, showing that there's a path forward, that, that we can, we can make progress in these areas. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else wants to speak? Guessing there's one or two in the room? Come on up. Tell us who you are and where you're from and what you want to say.
I'm Naomi Beal. I live at 139 South Freeport Road here in Freeport. I am the Executive Director of Passive House Maine and I've been working with the Freeport Can Group on their housing and solar group. And we have been talking about this stretch code adoption for well over a year at this point with various members of council and community. And I also just want to offer my full-throated support in adoption of the stretch code. I do agree that the, the leadership role that Freeport can play is important. And I don't know how many on the council or in the audience attended a talk that I gave, I guess it was actually last year, but it was all about the first that Freeport has provided in various elements of the built environment. First, lead adoption, first Passive House High School, drawing a blank, first deep energy retrofit, Freeport Community Services. Freeport has consistently been a leader in the built environment and I really, really encourage us to take this very next step for the stretch code. There is some confusion about like what the actual code will be in January. There's no confusion about what the code is right now. So I'm just offering that. And, and also to take heart that that MUBEC Board and the Energy Tags, I also participate in the Energy Tags, are going through those international codes, line by line by line, really, thrashing those for on behalf of our communities. And so when a stretch code is adopted, then we can have some confidence that it's been well vetted. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Who's next?
Lance Fletcher, 14 South Freeport Road. Since we first brought this up a year ago, the Gulf of Maine has warmed a little bit more. We've had severe drought followed by nothing winter with very little snowpack. We live in the woods in northern New England and the trees are really feeling it. There's nothing new to say on the stretch code. It's a 10% savings for people who, who follow it and it's about a 1% increase in cost. And I think, I don't know whether one of our new members is going to be here tonight, but there's a marine scientist who's joined our group and he was discussing the other day about where the center of the lobster fishery has gone as a result of climate change. And if you wonder what might happen in Freeport in 10 or 20 years, if this is not slowed down, then you ask the folks farther south by 100 miles or 150 miles, they used to be the center. I think he said the center is now in Jonesport of the lobster fishery. So I ask you to consider these things and, and understand that we're not going to feel the worst of it. Nobody in this room is, but our grandkids are. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, come on up. No need to raise your hand, just step up to the podium. And if anybody else is wanting to speak next, feel free to queue up behind them.
Yeah, hi, I'm, I'm Russ Martin. Live on 6 Whispering Pines. That's in District 2. And I've been a resident of Freeport for 40 years. But before that, I've been a consulting engineer for 50 years. And as such, I've done, designed for building systems, systems that consume energy, make people comfortable. And for those 50 years, we've had regular interaction with building codes. For, for 10 years recently, I served on the Codes Board in Augusta. Was actually one of the inaugural members when we put the Buildings Code into effect. Was actually one of the inaugural members when we put the Buildings Code into effect and administered it for, for all that time. I am no longer on the board, so anything I say here, of course, is my, my own opinion. One thing I learned in that time in Augusta and as an engineer is that codes are a minimum requirement. They are not the sky, they're a minimum for safety and, and energy reasons. I think that Freeport can do more than the minimum. I would like to see the town do more than the minimum. As such, I would urge you to adopt the stretch code. And I would point out too, that I don't think there will ever be an easier time to do it, a shorter step to do it. The current stretch code is the 2021 Energy Code. I have it on good sources that the new base code will be essentially that same code, perhaps some modifications. So it's not a long step, as I said, and I think this is a great time to make that commitment and take that step. I'd be happy to offer any other information if I could help.
Thank you very much. I think we do have somebody on Zoom who's got a hand up. If you want to bring them up.
Oh, it's not.
Maybe, maybe not.
Yeah, we're having a Zoom.
Okay.
Oh, no, it's Raffin.
Can you hear me now?
You sure can. Go ahead, right ahead.
Wonderful. So my name is Theus Siskewitz. I live at 26 Park Street and earlier I got a lovely introduction. I am the marine scientist who recently joined the Freeport Can group and I just wanted to share a bit with my experience and the work and the reason why I am strongly in favor of us adopting this stretch code. So starting in 2003, I led the, a team that was the first team to really thoroughly survey Maine's kelp beds. And that's really where my area of expertise is in coastal ecosystems. And we sampled 105 sites from York to Cutler and at the time, we really weren't thinking much about how things could change. The idea was that, you know, we have cold nutrient rich, well-protected waters in Maine, it's going to stay that way. DMR kind of picked up the sampling for the next decade or so. And it wasn't until 2016 when we had a big seminar in Portland about how fast the Gulf of Maine was warming and this whole realization that Maine, the Gulf of Maine is warming faster than 99% of all the other bodies and water. And we started asking the question, what's going on with the coastal ecosystems and the kelp forest in particular? And we hadn't looked closely at it. So from 2016, 17, 18, 19, we went back and we sampled all those beds again and we are submitting our findings this week, hopefully to the journal Nature. But the quick synopsis of it is that in Costco Bay in particular, our kelp beds are all but gone. We've lost about 60% of our kelp cover. And at the same time, we're seeing all these species that formerly only existed down Cape Cod and south, moving up to Maine. So, you know, in some ways it's real that we are getting an invasion of, of things from Massachusetts coming up and taking residence here in Maine, but in this case, it's seaweed. And we also have a whole bunch of invasives. One of them is a weed called Dasisiphonia that the lobstermen have nicknamed Gorilla Hair because it gets in and it smothers everything and it causes big problems with our settlement of lobsters and crabs and other things. So, you know, I brought up the point in our meeting a couple of days ago about how the lobster fishery.
About 30 seconds left.
Okay, I'm almost done, but how in the lobster fishery in 1990, the heart of it was in Long Island Sound. And in 2000, it moved up to York, Maine, and by 2010, it was in Stonington. And now it's continuing to push more towards the Canadian border. So all of this is to say, our Gulf and Costco Bay in particular is warming alarmingly fast. And I really, really hope that Freeport can take a lead on this and do more than just the bare minimum on the codes. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Anybody else on Zoom or in the room who wants to speak? Come on right up. Yeah, Mason can go first and then Bob after that and anybody else can line up.
I'm Mason Morfit. I'm District 3 in Counselor Pillbury's empire. I'm with Freeport Climate Action now and I stress the "now" in our name because climate change is an urgent existential problem that we must deal with now. As we're all aware, global temperatures are increasing faster than predicted even recently. Similarly, the oceans are warming faster, the polar ice sheets are melting faster, severe weather is occurring more frequently and so far across the environment. Our number one priority should be to reduce the emission of greenhouse gases and building cards are one of the most effective ways to do that. I therefore strongly urge you to adopt the most rigorous available stretch building code tonight. As Senator Angus King has said about climate change, not heeding warnings has consequences and we can always find reasons for inaction. I hope that tonight is not one in which we mistakenly fall prey to reasons for inaction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morfit. Mr. Stevens.
I'm Bob Stevens, 50 Moose Crossing. Following up on what Russ Martin was talking about, about safety, I checked in with the code enforcement officer in, in South Portland. They've had the stretch code in effect since April of 2022. I wondered how it's working, whether there's been any grumbling, any problems with contractors? And Barbara Skelton, she's the code enforcement officer, said, no, they see what it is, they come in and they do what the code requires. She said, it's a lot like safety. It's a lot like when maybe fire alarms go in. It's going to cost a little bit more money. But you know, safety sort of struck me by analogy. We're talking true about safety here too, but it's not just safety of individual homes. We're really talking about safety for all of us, safety in our homes. We all have seen examples of the disastrous climate changes, the fires, the heat waves, the floods. They don't leave people safe in their homes. This will help also keep people safe in their homes. I further talked with the Economic Development Officer of South Portland, Bill Mann. Bill uses the stretch code actually as an inducement to reach out and bring businesses, commerce, people to South Portland because they want to be, like I think you want to be, we want to be, a model, a model town. He finds it to be an important element, important tool that can be used. One last, I went to opening, or show anyway, of a eight-story University of Southern Maine dormitory a week or two ago and it has been constructed a little beyond the stretch code. It's really gone the passive house route, which costs even more. But what they were able to do is spend a bit more, I don't know, 1% to 3% during the pandemic, they think some costs ran up, and they're able to keep market rates for students in those buildings because of the savings that will take place over seven to eight years by the efficiency standards that they're using there. So that's what happens. A little money gets spent now, a lot of money gets saved later, there's a lot more comfort and we move on and do our part here in Freeport. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
My name is John Albright. I live on Riverview Drive in South Freeport. Been there since 86. I haven't done any work on Costco Bay over those years, but I am not a member of Freeport Can.
Yes.
I'm just a regular guy, retired and getting more and more frightened about the future. I think, I implore you to listen to these experts who are, who are talking about some very, very significant changes. I'm sure you've all heard of the canary in the coal mine. Old coal miners used to take canaries down in the coal mine and when the canary died, they knew it was time for them to get up and out. So we have lots of canaries in Costco, in Costco Bay and they're all beginning to die and I think it's time now to really listen up and act. So thank you very kindly for, for your action tonight.
Anybody else who wants to offer comment about the stretch codes? I don't see anybody on Zoom. I don't see anybody in the room jumping to get up. So, Councilor Daniele, since you opened it, would you want to offer a motion to close the public hearing? I move to close the public hearing. Thank you, Councilor Lawrence. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Thank you. That carries six to zero. And Councilor Daniele, do you want to read the order and then we can discuss it? Be it ordained that amendments to the Chapter 11 Building Code Ordinance of the Town of Freeport to adopt stretch energy codes effective July 1, 2023 be approved. Is there a second?
Sure, second.
Thank you, Councilor Lawrence. Okay, council discussion. What do you guys think? Questions, comments before we take a vote? Counselor Bradley.
So I noticed in the audience, I hope that I'm not nosy, but there are a lot of people who know one another and not everyone spoke. I wonder if there were people who didn't speak, who support this, who would be willing to express their support by raising their hand? Thank you.
Counselor Pillsbury.
I'm in support. I think it's a small step, as was mentioned, you know, it doesn't even take us into the future, it takes us just to 2021. So I think it's a very reasonable step for us to take to safeguard our, our future. Also for the record, I'm unaware of any Empire building going on in District 3. So I appreciate the support, but I do want that in the record.
Question for the manager planner. If we don't adopt these changes, are we stuck in limbo since we've already adopted some changes and we would have ordinances somewhat in conflict with each other and we'd have to?
Yes, you'll stress me out and I'll make you amend the other one, undo what you already did.
Kind of half did it last time. Councilor Daniele. Why do we have to change it if the state makes a move? Why doesn't this just point to the 2021 codes? And then regardless of what the state does, we still point to the 2021 code? It's like they adopt that as their base code, for instance?
So you list all of the individual codes out and you acknowledge that this is the stretch code. We don't know if they're going to adopt this as a base code, as a base code amended, or as a stretch code or an entirely different code. Because it's going to come back to you anyways when they change the code, you're going to have to note all the base codes. I think you're going to, you're going to have to do something. It doesn't say, it's not so vague just to say whatever code and stretch code is adopted by the state, like it's very specific.
Well, that's why, so why are we so specific to say the base code or the stretch code? Why don't we just say, we're adopting the 2021 code? And then if they move that to be the base code, well, we still are at the 2021 code.
Because we're usually specific. So when people come in and look at ordinances, they know exactly what we're talking about and exactly what code. I mean, if you're just going to give them a hall pass, adopt whatever code by the state and stretch code, I think you could probably do that, but I don't think it's as clear to the users of the ordinance.
Jake, in the ordinance, it doesn't say stretch code. It says it on our agenda because we were consistent with the last time we brought it up, but the ordinance itself just refers to the 2021 International Energy Conservation Code. That's why I'm wondering why we'd have to change it if this becomes the base code. It's already, I'm just wondering why we have to go back to it if they change. This can be a conversation for later, but.
I think the way you're wording it, it's not going to be up to date and for consistency, because you've already like half done it, I think you're better to adopt it as detailed as it is. And then when you, when the codes come back to you, if you want to try to do it more vague to capture kind of going forward what they're doing, I would say you could, we could evaluate that at that time.
I'll ask you about it after.
Yeah, yep.
Other questions, comments?
The only comment I have is it seems, you know, when I build a house, I build as tight as I can, or at least that's what I did when I changed the barn. But it seems like we're adding cost here and people are building, well, they're building this way anyway, so what's the point of the code? We're raising, raising, I guess, the bar, but if everyone's building this way, it seems like it's a rule of something we've already done. Kind of like what we did with the, the, you know, what was it? The short-term rental, everyone was kind of following that. We had no, has anyone not, is anyone not building this way right now? I mean, we're going to, yeah, well, it's a cost and we have a problem with cost of housing and this, and I get the long term, but we need people to be able to afford houses. And that would be my only concern is that we're now, we're just going to keep pricing ourselves out of this, out of the single-family home for someone who's just starting out.
Other comments, questions before we take a vote? Move the question. I think we're ready. All right. So all in favor of the ordinance to adopt the stretch energy codes? Any opposed? Carry six to zero.
Just clarify, that's effective July 1, just like the other one.
Effective July 1, yep. So, thank you for everyone for coming out and offering your opinion and filling their rooms. Nice to have company. If you do leave and want to continue the discussions, if you can move closer to the front door. We have to leave the doors open here, so keep your conversations to a loud whisper, that'll help us.
You know, if there's ever any doubt about the impact your input has, tonight should encourage you to keep coming.
Moving on to item 96-23, this is to consider action relative to, we're not sitting a public hearing, we have the public hearing tonight, correct?
Right. That is a public hearing. Consider it from outside too.
So this is actually, we have a public hearing, this is.
Oh, whoops, I missed. Sorry.
Yeah, that's right. To consider action relative to adopting a proposed amendments to Chapter 39, which is our loitering, curfew and noise ordinance to add a new section pertaining to nuisance lighting. So are you giving background on this or is the manager giving background on this? Okay. Do you want to give us a minute or two on how we got here?
Sure. So this is something that Peter Drucef, your former manager, worked on with some residents that had concern about some lighting trespass issues in their neighborhood. They worked closely with the town attorney who helped them craft some standards that we could incorporate into our existing loitering curfew and noise ordinance, which we would now rename as part of this change. It would have standards for a light trespass, when light shines from one property goes over the property line onto another, people could now call the police department and the police department could enforce it. So that's the background. I think you have public here tonight looking to speak and that's a glimpse of what I inherited.
Thank you, Caroline. Sorry for putting you on the spot.
Nope.
Councilor Lawrence, do you want to move to open the public hearing?
Sure. I move to open the public hearing.
Second. Councilor Daniele, all in favor? Any opposed? Six to zero. Okay. So same as last time, we're going to have a public hearing first, then we'll bring it up to council for further discussion and questions. So if there's anybody from the public who wants to talk about the proposed changes for lighting ordinances, now's the time. Come on up. Tell us who you are, where you live and what you want to say.
Yes, my name's Art Disinger, 7 Buttercup Drive, Freeport, Maine. Yes, my name's Art Disinger, 7 Buttercup Drive, Freeport, Maine. First of all, I want to thank those that have been working on this project, the past manager, the current manager, Mr. Egan, Mr. Pyth, the chief of police, sat in on many meetings. The reason that this has been brought forth was we had an individual that was, had lighting that was extremely bright. We went down to the local police department, which is here in Freeport, and we asked them what they could do if they could go and ask the person to please turn the lights down. And they said, no, there is no ordinance. We have no grounds to go up and tell anybody what to do with their lights. And I said, really? Then what do we do? And the police said, simply, you must get an ordinance, you must get something passed that we have some ability, at least go tell them to turn the lights down. So that's what we've done. We've worked for, well, we started this project almost four years ago. We got these people involved about two years ago, and this has been brought forth to you now. Not only for the peace of mind of residents that have to deal with this, this is a safety issue, these lights going across major roads, it's something that needs to be addressed. I know that the police department, with the town manager, and probably the town attorney, will come up with a plan to enforce it. But right now, we need this ordinance to have them to be able to at least go to this individual and say, or any individual, and say, you got to turn these down. And I would say 70%, 80% of the time, that's exactly what's going to happen. There will be no police involved, other than go and turn them down, hand them a copy of the ordinance, and turn the lights down. Those that don't abide, then the police can deal with it through the town and town attorney and the town manager. We need your help. We've dealt with this a long time. Most of you have seen the lights, the pictures that we've shown you. It's not good. So please, I appreciate anything you can do for us. Thank you.
Mr. Disinger. Any other public comment? Anybody else want to come up and speak? Anybody on Zoom who wants to speak, you can raise your Zoom hand.
Hello, my name's Ken Mann. Live in Freeport, off Wolf's Neck Road. I just wanted to make sure that lighting in commercial districts is exempted from this ordinance, because, as you know, you know, commercial districts are very close together, buildings, and it's virtually impossible to light one parking lot without partially lighting somebody else's parking lot. And I know that's not the intent, to go after the businesses. It seems more like a residential issue to me that's being brought this forward. But I don't see anything in the exemptions here that, you know, allow existing commercial lighting, that it's never been a problem, but doesn't meet these strict requirements to be allowed. So it seems to me a simple amendment that would, you know, exempt commercial districts from this proposal would be in order, avoid future complications. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Anybody else have comment? Question? Seeing on, Counsel Lawrence, do you want to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
There a second for that?
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Daniele. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Carry six to zero. And Counsel Lawrence, do you want to open the, read in the ordinance?
Yep. Be ordained that the proposed amendment to the Chapter 39 Loitering, Curfew, and Noise Ordinance of the Town of Freeport be approved.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Daniele. Okay, questions, discussion at the council? Counsel Bradley.
My question is, does the standard in the nuisance lighting section apply to the high school field?
Do you know the answer to that?
I, that was one of the things I flagged early on, that I thought, the high school field has its own specific lighting standards, and so I thought one of the things you could put in here is to know that that's exempt. I don't know what their foot candle measurements are in regards to the comment about commercial users. They actually are required to have full cutoff fixtures, and they already need to be 1/10 foot candle at the property line. I do share some concerns that Mr. Mann brought up, especially in the village, where we have existing properties that are close together and close to property lines. If they have an egress fixture, which they have to have for code purposes, near their door, it's in place, it's been there forever, and it's not full cutoff, that they could be picked up by this ordinance, but a new commercial project should already be complying to this, and we have a standard that when they're not open, they need to be turning it down to a security level or turning their lighting off. So it is more strict, but there could be some situations out there that are legally non-conforming to the commercial standards. I can pull up the...
Would this be a time to suggest, propose an amendment? I'd like to propose under Section B, an exception for properties which have their own specific lighting requirements, such as the high school field.
You could put an exemption for, well, we have two sections that regulate lighting in the zoning ordinance. You have exterior lighting, which is 521A, but I think what we're referring to here specifically would be an exception to lighting regulated under Section 521B Athletic Field Lighting, Athletic Field Lighting in the Village One District, which covers the athletic fields.
Thank you. Are there any other sections that we want to include in that amendment for downtown commercial? That has, you mentioned they have their own regulation.
They do have their own regulations. I don't, is that something that you guys talked about with the attorney when you crafted this?
No, but it sounds like a good idea, like we should have something in there to, so that we don't have, we're not manufacturing a problem here.
I feel like the referencing and exempting 521B, the athletic field lighting, is really clear and easy. From an enforcement perspective, 521A, the exterior lighting for commercial is a little bit harder. Like, have they been through site plan? Haven't they been through site plan? Is that their approval? They got fixedured, are approved, and you have two different enforcement authorities here. Zoning provisions in site plan is enforceable by the code officer. This is enforceable by the police department.
The police chief can exempt on safety grounds, so I would assume that that would be most of the portion of the commercial lots, like that's a safety issue, that they have to have good lighting and whatnot. And that's the point of the lighting, right? Is everybody safe?
My suggestion would be, let's talk about this, let's do what we're going to do here tonight. Talk about that part of this afterwards, and we can go back and amend if we think that's something that ought to be exempt because it has an adequate regulatory, rather than go back and forth tonight and try to figure out what we do or don't know about how this works.
Yeah, I'd be interested to look at the lighting plan. You know, we all, there were big fears when the lighting went in at the high school, but when you're actually there, there was LED lights do shine right down, so I'd be interested to pull their file and see what their calculations were for being at that property line. I think it's something worth revisiting.
Quite a bit of discussion and data presented on that, so we probably have some good records of it. I agree with Jake. I think that we could probably get the commercial in the village districts covered by a police chief's determination that this set of dynamics is exempt because of safety. So to the point that Mr. Mann brought up about having commercial lighting, which is necessary and required, doesn't inadvertently create challenges here.
Yeah, the only downside to that, I think, is it does give a lot of discretion. What if the police chief's not working that night when the call comes in? That's one downside of it, but it does give that option.
Ultimately, the enforcement leads to an issuance of a citation and a fine, which we have a lot of discretion over, so.
True.
Doesn't, it doesn't do anything to mitigate the call initially, I guess, but yeah, it's very difficult. I think we see a light meter in our future for equipment purchases here.
Or actually, you know, that you might, you might be able to cover it here if you look at the exceptions. The persons of this section shall not apply at one lighting generated by construction activities, outdoor events issued by a permanent license, or approval granted by a municipal reviewing authority. So if someone comes through site plan review and they have an approval granted, I think that could probably fall under an exemption. You might have situations where people have been there predate us, some older businesses and buildings, but I think that will capture a lot of people.
Yep.
Given all that, Counsel Bradley, you started an amendment. Do you still want to...
Yeah, I still want to, I think we should exempt the athletic field because it's so specific, and it has such its own regimen. So if there's a second to that, I'd appreciate it.
To clarify, it would be adding an exception for properties covered under Section 521B of the zoning ordinance? Is that a good way of phrasing it?
Yeah, I would probably kind of, I'd probably put like a new number two, lighting approved under, or lighting approved in accordance with 521A exterior lighting of the, oh, sorry, 521B athletic field lighting in the Village One District of the Freeport zoning ordinance, and then renumber from there.
There we go.
Got it, got it. So a new section saying that lighting covered under, that is exempt as well.
So I would second the amendment to make that specific language.
Okay, great.
So are you doing a new number two?
Yeah.
Did I hear what we just did to my motion? If anything?
You comment, so I write it down.
Yeah, one, standby.
Exempted athletic fields approved in a certain zone.
Lighting approved under Section 521B of the, or athletic field lighting in the Village One District of the Freeport zoning ordinance. And then you renumbered three, four, and five.
And that covers the high school athletics.
So these are numbers within Section B of exceptions. So instead of four exceptions, we now have five exceptions.
Yes.
Any questions on the amendment to exempt the athletic fields? All right, so let's get that done. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's six to zero. So we have an amended motion now for lighting ordinance with an exception added for athletic fields. Any other questions on the lighting ordinance itself? I know there was some debate about enforcement and how to, how this would be enforced, and I know we've got somebody from the police department here. Do you have anything you want to add about whether this is enforceable or not?
I was looking over there.
Yeah, if you could, yeah.
Obviously, I'm the lieutenant. Enforcement for us is difficult. This is nothing that we've ever looked at before. We would need some type of instrument, if you will, to measure the light. And I know it says something about 1/10 of a candle, foot, whatever the heck that is. We need something to measure it, but we also need, would also need, it's sort of like a radar unit. Think of it that way. Our radar units in our cars, they have to get calibrated every year, or at least the calibration has to get checked through a separate company. I would think that any court is going to look at this type of violation and say, well, first of all, how did you measure it? Second of all, the instrument that you measured it with, how do we know that's accurate? And then third of all, where did you measure it? Did you measure it on a property line? How do we know the property line is where it says it is? If the stake is here and there, do we know those stakes are accurate? So those are some of the issues that we see popping up if we would have to enforce this ordinance.
Would you be able to enforce the other parts of it? So a lighting system that doesn't, that projects above the horizontal plane, or creates a safety hazard, or creates a nuisance? Would you be able to make a judgment?
Well, obviously, a safety hazard would be an easy one. If somebody's shining a light right at a moving car, that's, you know, that would be a safety hazard. But as far as enforcing, you know, you're talking about looking at it from maybe an opinion, which our opinions are moot. We can't enter our opinion in any type of court. It's always about the facts. And the only person that can enter an opinion in it is somebody that is vested by the court. So if one party says it's clearly a violation, the other party says it's not, so it's difficult for the officer to make that determination on if this is actually a violation when you're talking about something like this. It's hard to determine, you know, is that the moonlight, or is that the light from a fixture?
Want to hear about projecting all of its light below the horizontal plane? That's something you can look at and say this isn't...
I'm sorry, can you say it again?
Yeah, the way it's worded, it says, a lighting system that is designed and installed projects all of its light below the horizontal plane. So basically, the light needs to point down, it can't point up or out.
Yep.
So is that something you could take a picture of and say, yeah, you've got this light pointing across the way? It's clearly not.
Well, yeah, I mean, we certainly could. How that would be taken in court, I can't make that determination.
Would a first step be, in most of these cases, just talking to the people anyway and saying, hey, it looks like you may have an...
In any type of, in any type of ordinance, you know, our first course of action is always going to be to educate the individual that we're talking to about whatever ordinance it is. We're never going to just run in and cut paper and call it a day.
Go ahead, Counsel Lawrence.
Is it going to really get down to the property line? Like, if you have someone that's shining their light across the street, you could put it in the street and say, hey, it's in the, it's showing up in the street. So clearly that, you know, the property line is definitely something you'd use if it was between two parcels of property, but most of the time, I think it's across the street or something like that. So you could probably test the streets. Let's see if it's showing in the street here. That's not even in your property line, right?
Right, but would there be a violation if your light is shining onto the street? I mean, is the, is the ordinance saying that it can't go beyond your property line?
Yes.
So I mean, yeah, there's, there's that.
So if you clearly put it in someone else's property line, so...
But again, you still, we still have to be able to measure it.
Yes, you do have to measure it.
And we have to be able to show a court that this instrument that they're measuring with is accurate. And then furthermore, we have to be trained on it.
Counsel Bradley.
First, thanks for the prom.
Oh, no problem.
The police department showed up at a prom picture night. 150, 200 people kept them all parked safely and working cooperatively, and it was a great opportunity.
I could just say one request. If you can have less mosquitoes, less, that would be great.
It'll be our next ordinance, no mosquitoes.
No mosquitoes, next year.
But to get, to get to this, I mean, I get all the points that you raised, but as I read the ordinance, and trying not to be your lawyer, okay, it seems to me that this gives you broad discretion. There is the issue you have of, you know, this standard that you will apply, light foot candle, something that you'll have to measure with, and if you're using that standard, all the things you raised are right. But there's another one that deals with glare, and it's so, it's, you know, the argument might be from some that it's overly broad, but it really includes your judgment about whether it causes reduced vision or blindness, creates a safety hazard, or a nuisance to abutting nearby property owners. It includes, but is not limited to, any beam of light crossing a property line. I mean, that's so broad that I don't think that if you find in your judgment that this is something that is above and beyond the normal lighting of a house, and it's directed at another property, you're going to have any problem coming within the ordinance. Now, whether the court says it's too much, too soon, I don't know, but that's not your problem, that's, that would be ours.
Right. You know, I guess the issue would be at court would be, what is reasonable? Really, when you get right down to it, what is the homeowner doing that's reasonable or unreasonable?
I think, I mean, I guess I, you know, here I am playing a little bit of lawyer, but you know, you, the police officer comes in and he says, look, you know, this is a violation of our ordinance. And the court says, in what specific way? You said, well, it's a glare. And in our judgment, it's a glare. It comes from one property, it goes across a property line into another property, and the ordinance we have says that it's, it is any beam of light coming from one property to another. And you won't do that for just something that's, you know, background lighting, but if you find something that causes you concern, you'll have, you'll have the backing in the ordinance. The court, no, yeah, who knows what a court will do? Let's all guess. But it's, they may say it's overly broad, and you may come back to us and say, I can't enforce this because the courts aren't allowing anything that broad. But it's not going to...
I'm just looking at it from the perspective of, as we always have to look at it, going that all, going the distance, going all the way to court, and is this actually enforceable? Is this enforceable to the point of conviction, if you will?
Well, and that's, and that's a fair question to ask to us. Have we written an ordinance that's overly broad? And will it get thrown back in our face? And what we're telling you is try it. This is, this is what we've come up with, as the gentleman said, after four years of working on it, and lots of committees, and, you know, we're confident that it's worth trying. And if we're wrong, it's not your problem, it's ours.
Yep, I understand. We just don't want to get into a situation where we are taking sides, if you will. One homeowner says, this is too bright. The other homeowner says, it's clearly pointing down, or whatever. It's, you know, the police would be right in the middle, and so we want to make sure that everybody's fair. It's fair for everybody.
I'm sure that our police department will always be fair.
Of course.
And if you, if you feel that it's worth bringing a summons, you will. If a court thinks that you, you were overly aggressive in doing it and agree with the homeowner, then it'll, you'll come back to us and say, this is just unenforceable. I'm just trying to give you support, not to worry about the, the possibility that a court may throw it back in your face. That, that happens to you all the time, I'm sure.
I could tell you some stories.
I'm sure you can.
All set?
Yeah, for now. Thank you.
So just to clarify, the way this language is written, there's two things. So it says, "A person may not install or replace any permanent or temporary lighting system unless the lighting system one is a fully shielded lighting system." So if you look at your handout, you had guidelines for good exterior lighting, and it had a list of acceptable and unacceptable. So if you were going to go to Home Depot this weekend and buy this cute fixture, that's all glass, and you can see the bulb, you cannot do that. You also can't have trespass. So if you buy one of these shielded fixtures, and a lot of the LED fixtures are shielded now because the light sits up, so if they go there and they're like, either A, you don't have the shielded fixture, or you do, I think if they go there and see something like this, where you can't see the light, but they're shining it up, you know, at the neighbors, or at the cars, or wherever it might be, then that second clause is going to kick in. So I think the first part of it is going to be an easy task for the officer. You know, they can call out the lighting fixture. The second's going to be how they're angling that shielded light if they're using it, and if they're meeting that glare and those other standards. So I just want to clarify that there's two parts to what you're adopting here.
You know, Caroline, you just added another element to this discussion. Do you think that these standards that you've got as guidelines for good lighting play any role in the enforcement of this?
It's pretty obvious when you go to a site whether or not those fixtures are shielded or not.
But my, maybe, but you, you're sort of reading the guidelines into the ordinance as something that would be, would determine whether something was legal or illegal. I'm asking you if that's the intent.
They defined what a fully shielded lighting system is.
I understand, but my question is broader than that. Is, are you thinking, when you attach the guidelines to this ordinance, that you are incorporating these guidelines into the ordinance?
No, no. That was just there to give a visual, based upon questions we had at the last meeting. We could do pictures, though, if you wanted to, just saying.
Any other questions before we vote? Okay, so the vote is for ordinance as amended.
Is public hearing still open?
Uh, no, it's closed.
Okay. Can I have one comment, though?
Sure.
About this?
Yep.
I heard she read that they had to be shielded. We had a little incident down on one of my neighbors down Route One, built a new building, put some nice carriage lanterns on the front, couple of little candle bulbs in there. I understand he was told by the code officer they didn't meet code. I think they're still there. They look great. I mean, they weren't meant to be spotlights or anything, so I think you really need to be careful how you define, you know, whether you can see the bulb or not, what the power is from the bulb, because there are beautiful lights on the front of a building, and it'd be a shame if people couldn't do that. I mean, adds to the look of any building to have a couple of nice carriage lamps on the front. I'm sure they cost a lot of money, so. Isn't this really a code officer issue, though?
I think what we're talking about tonight is not code officer, right?
Right, so zoning, commercial parties, this nuisance really is going to pick up one family, two-family accessory dwelling units because the commercial is covered during site plan review by the code officer. But Andy makes a good point, you know, for, in the past, for commercial lighting, they've allowed, like, if you have a decorative fixture, but you fully frost it, so you can't see the source of the light, so that minimizes, that's been something we've seen in the past. But again, as we go more to LED, it seems to be less of an issue in the future because the bulbs are quite often hidden, flush.
All right. I think we're ready to vote on this unless there's more comments. So we've got a motion as amended for our new amendments to Chapter 39. So all in favor of the motion as amended?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that carries six to zero. So we have a new ordinance, and we'll revisit if we need to revisit. So thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your patience in all these years and getting to this point. Hopefully, we have some resolution. The next item, I think, is an easier one. This is Item 97-23, to consider action relative to setting a public hearing. We have two public hearings to set. This one is about a new liquor license for the Harrah's Seekit Inn. And I think we've got, any background?
So the Harrah's Seekit Inn is, I guess, the cat's out of the bag, out for sale. It was, there's a transfer of ownership. These are the new owners applying for first their liquor license, and then their special amusement permit.
Oh, I see, both are for the Harrah's Seekit Inn. Okay.
Did you just say the Harrah's Seekit Inn is being sold?
Sold.
Sounds like it was. It's sold, right?
To who?
The applicant applying for new licenses.
So I should probably read my...
It's, I don't know how to say it, Giri, G-I-R-I, Harrah's Seekit LLC. At a mailing address of Quincy, Massachusetts.
So all I've got tonight is to set the public hearing for the liquor license, and then we'll do one for the amusement permit. Any questions on setting a public hearing for liquor license? I think we're up to Counselor Bradley for reading the order to set the public hearing for 97-23.
Be in order that a public hearing be set for June 6, 2023, at the town council meeting, starting at 6:00 PM at Town Hall, 30 Main Street, to discuss a new liquor license for the Harrah's Seekit Inn.
Thank you, Counsel.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Lawrence, for that. Any other questions about setting a public hearing? That was Counsel Bradley making the motion, Counsel Lawrence seconding it, for setting a public hearing for June 6th. Any other questions? All in favor of setting the public hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counsel Bradley, that was a yes vote from you, I think?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you.
I was kind of bringing myself up to date on the Harrah's Seekit Inn.
That's all right. Okay, so next item, very similar, 98-23, setting a public hearing for a new special amusement permit for the Harrah's Seekit Inn. Counsel Egan, would you want to read this one?
Be in order that a public hearing be set for June 6, 2023, at the town council meeting, starting at 6:00 PM at Town Hall, 30 Main Street, to discuss a new special amusement permit for the Harrah's Seekit Inn.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Lawrence. Any questions on this one? All in favor of setting the public hearing?
Aye.
Thank you. That's everybody, six to zero. Brings us to Item 99-23, to consider action relative to a letter of intent and exclusivity agreement with Revision Energy for installing Level III EV chargers on municipal property. And are you going to give us some background on this one?
Yeah, we had a conversation about this at our last meeting, and I believe we have James Penfold with us online from Revision Energy to explain their request to the town for initial endorsement of an agreement to work together so that they can pursue funding entirely for a Level III, which is a fast charger, significant investment, to put a fast charger in our downtown. So I'm hoping James is available. Will you move James over?
Yep, already did. He's on there.
Okay.
Yeah, hi. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Do you have any background, James, that you want to add?
Yeah, so I did submit some background information about the intention of the letter of intent, about how it's mutually beneficial to both the town of Freeport and to Revision. That should be in your packet. I'm happy to, to review that briefly. I mean, essentially, it's intended to provide the town with some assurance that Revision is going to go forward with a, with a serious effort to apply for the Efficiency Maine Trust, National Electric Vehicle Infrastructure, RFP. And then, you know, this is going to support drivers that want to travel to and throughout Maine with EVs, and that will enhance the town's sustainability initiatives at no cost to the town. And then for Revision's part, it provides us with a degree of assurance that the town will move toward signing a license agreement for the lease of the parking spaces. And then that will also enable, support us in continuing to invest considerable time and, and resources in developing the application with our engineering department, project managers, et cetera. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. And, you know, it's, it's, it's part of an RFP that includes seven sites that Efficiency Maine has identified, including five on Route One that start in Freeport to Ellsworth. And this will give us the opportunity to, to use, if we're able to use a public parking space, it'll make it a more equitable service for, for all businesses in, in Freeport. So rather than leaving this to, let's say, LL Bean, or any of the other developers, this will be something that supports all your businesses and all your visitors. So there's a lot, it's a very rigorous process going through this RFP. We've done it before with about a dozen-plus other sites that aren't as large a commitment as, as this National Electric Vehicle Infrastructure. But we're, we're very well qualified to do that. We are the most qualified in Maine, having, having pretty much deployed ninety-plus percent of the, the Level III charging stations. We also own and operate our own stations, so we're very familiar with maintaining a sustainable business model with these, so that they, 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 they're, they're, they have high uptime for drivers. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Counsel Bradley is going to kick us off.
Hi. At our last meeting, we considered this in some detail. And my understanding at the time was that Revision was looking to the town for an agreement to develop a fast charging station at a park, at a parking space in town, subject to be located by discussion. If I'm reading this exclusive agreement correctly, this is, if we sign this, we're not limiting it to one parking space, we're limiting it, we're, we're entering a relationship with Revision, which includes all chargers that might be developed in town on an exclusive basis with Revision. So to some of the comments that were made at our meeting last time, that this was, you know, essentially unfair to others who might want to put charging stations in, even though this is for free, the suggestion was made last time, no, it's only one space, and, you know, the exclusivity would be to that space. And that if the town was approached by others who wanted to do similar things, either on private property or not, that we could deal with them on a as-come basis. So my question is, are you really looking for us to grant you the authority to develop a charge, Level III charger at one parking space? Are you looking for an exclusive arrangement to develop Level III chargers throughout our town?
No, it would just be in one parking space, one parking lot, pardon me. The RFP requirements have a minimum requirement of four charging stations. So they, to put another way, they have to have, be able to charge four vehicles simultaneously. So that would require a minimum of four parking spaces. What we're, what we're looking for with the exclusivity is simply to, to give us some level of, of the vicinity, you know, five hundred feet kind of vicinity around us, to allow us to develop the business sustainably for, for a period of time during, during the site license agreement, or at least actually, pardon me, during the LOI period, while that bridges to the license agreement, so that we have the assurance to go forward with an application to EMT in, in your parking lots, rather than not having that, that support and, and having it from another town where we would want to put our effort into that application with Efficiency Maine. The other thing to mention is that there are, to my knowledge, no other companies that have come forward. And I would, I would just say that, that the Efficiency Maine RFP is advertised nationally, and we, as a company, are in contact with a lot of the national charging station providers. And they're coming through us, and we're not, you know, we're not hearing a lot of enthusiasm, if you will, to put in applications in, in Maine at this time. These are extraordinarily expensive to put in, and there is a twenty percent match. So it's not just free money from, from Efficiency Maine.
Well, I'll speak for myself, and I, this is in all transparency. I'm a customer of yours in several different arenas, and I, I respect the company and I do business with you, but that's transparency I'm relating. But this is quite a different, my understanding of this that's before us tonight is quite different from what was presented to us at the earlier meeting. It's much more expanded, it's longer in scope, it's, it's larger in scale, and it, it gives me pause, to be honest.
James, would you be amenable if we updated the exclusivity to a five-hundred-foot radius of the mutually determined location?
We are not seeking a town exclusivity by any stretch. We're, we're really looking, if you think about a gas station, for example, you know, they're, they're, they're even kitty-corner on, at intersections, and they manage to survive. But the last thing you want is them literally right next to you. The business model for fast charging at this time and for the next few years is, is challenging. It's, there's, there's, there's a high risk with it, even with the twenty percent match, because it's a chicken-and-egg situation. Until, if we don't put out fast chargers, EV drivers don't see them, and they don't feel like they have the support to be able to bring an EV from New York or Boston up to Freeport. to Freeport. But, um, we need them to come to be able to support our business model, um, in large numbers. So right now, the utilization is at a point where it's, it, it, we essentially, um, will be in the red with this for the next few years. So the idea is, if we have some level of exclusivity, that is enough that, you know, we, we can at least have some, um, level of assurance, uh, of what we're working with for the next few years.
That makes sense. Thank you. Can I suggest one other change, which is, um, paragraph eight about confidentiality? Says the provisions of this agreement and all information related, uh, et cetera, shall be treated as confidential for two years. We discussing it on public TV and we can't do things that way as a council, so I assume it would be okay, but, uh, I'll ask the question, is it okay if we strike that paragraph?
I, I, I can't imagine why it would be a problem. I think maybe when we get into the license agreement, that is, that's a more complex instrument, and maybe we wouldn't want the competition to know, you know, what our terms are. But for, for the letter of intent, I, I, it's, it's pretty basic, um, agreement, so I, I don't see a problem with that.
And even when we do the license agreement, that, the end of the day, it would need to be in public record, so you can.
I'll bring that to our, to our legal folks. That's, 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 that's out of my wheelhouse, I, I, I regret. But, um, I'm sure that's not a problem.
You could put a clause that they must comply with Main Freedom of Information Act. So if it has to be public information, it's public information. Something like that, if you want to put that in there.
Uh, Councilor Lawrence?
Does this exclusivity in the 500-foot radius include someone who buys a plot of land and decides they want to do that?
I would want it, if it was, the suggestion I made would be 500 feet of the contiguous municipal property, something like that. So if it's a parking lot that we own, within 500 feet up to the boundaries of that parking lot.
Up to the boundaries of the parking lot?
Yeah, because we couldn't enforce it on private property that would happen to be adjacent.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah, good point.
500 feet's pretty far.
This would be instead of us installing something, so we're.
If you guys are all right with it, we don't have a public hearing officially because it's not an ordinance, but I'm happy to take some public comment and then we can continue to discuss it.
If I ask, 500 feet, is, is that a 500-foot square? So that's 250?
500, 500.
500 by 500 by 500.
500-foot radius is what I was going to suggest. I think it's just easier to.
Within, but it's still.
Within that parking lot.
But that's 250,000 square feet.
I can't think of a town.
It's 25.
But it should be a radius within that parking lot, not just.
Right.
A whole area there.
Yeah, yeah, we need to.
Not including the public right of way.
Any town-owned property within that radius, we wouldn't put one in.
Charging right away. That, that's the intent, I think, is 500-foot radius on that property, up to the boundaries of that property.
For other municipally-owned spaces that we would put, like, I think we just need to be clear that it's, we're talking about, we're governing ourselves, like, we would not, as a town, put in.
Right, right.
Yes, I'm all for public comment.
Okay, thank you. All right, Vali, I guess you're here to talk about this.
Thank you. I'm just going to be super brief. Uh, really appreciate the discussion and the level of thoughtfulness that you're putting into this. As you know, I was here last time around, and I'm here to represent the Freeport Sustainability Board to say that we fully endorse the proposal with whatever changes you need to make, uh, to allow it to move forward. We think it's a really great opportunity for the town at no cost to the taxpayer to actually have access to another Level Three chargers. Just last night, we had a workshop for the Climate Action Plan, and several people actually made the comment that even though we do have all the LL Bean chargers, oftentimes when they go to charge, they have to wait. And with the increase of number of cars that are EV, um, I think it's going to be sooner rather than later that we will be using additional chargers, um, pretty much all the time. So I really appreciate everything you're doing, and thank you for considering the proposal.
Thanks, Vali. Anybody else want to speak? I know there's a couple of people who have opinions on the matter, and this is a good time, if you do want to come up.
Yeah, Andrew Arsnold, uh, Freeport resident. I don't want any of my comments to think that I'm not in favor of each agent, because if somebody wants to buy one, I don't care. So I just am concerned, like Ed is, with some of the language. I think last time we discussed this was a 200-foot, and I was really under the impression it was going to be one space. I didn't realize it was going to be four. You know, I understand they have to have a couple of spaces, but, you know, this is sort of evolving as we go along, and I also don't understand the exclusivity, as long as it's within, maybe not a radius, but on that parking lot. Because a lot of these spaces, if we remember, they had to be 600 feet from the front door to provide a space for downtown retail space. 500 feet's almost up to Main Street in some of these places. So it really ought to be, maybe he gets an exclusive to that lot, uh, not a radius, per se, because if, you know, whoever the next owner is of the next lot over or something like that wants to put one on, or the pharmacy wants to put one on, I think we need to make sure that this happens. I think we also need to promote, uh, more local businesses to put them on their own property, which is what my complaint was last time with the downtown vision, which said local property owners and businesses, we should promote there. I don't know where that's going. I know the town was providing some kind of grant, to look into some kind of grants through Adam Bliss. I think that should be pushed out to storefronts and places around town that might want to get on the bandwagon with us. I don't know. I'm just concerned with this, with this contract, like Ed is. I'm glad Ed went over it, and, uh, he understands contracts better than I do, that's for sure.
We just got this tonight.
Yeah.
I just got it tonight.
Yeah.
Last Thursday.
I didn't have this language in it last week. Did I?
We came out on, by email, on Wednesday, Thursday, when our packets came out.
Thursday before the meeting. Sorry, I didn't see this before tonight, and I, it was the comments, not the language. Now that I see the languages, I'm even more concerned.
Yeah.
But we're going to address it.
Yeah, yeah, we can certainly make changes.
I, I back up there, you know, on looking at this contract over very close, because, you know, we want to make sure that we provide for other people that want to come in at some point, you know? So.
I'm not going to speak for James, but I'm, I think that the initial conversation that I had in, um, actually in response to the Sustainability Committee, which took the initial invitation from Revision, um, was that the exclusivity was that on town-owned property within 500 feet of this location, the town would not entertain an agreement with another vendor for a period of time. The town has no ability to regulate a private owner from installing a, an EV charger on their property 60 feet away, uh, if they want to go for that expense. These are over $100,000. So I think the exclusivity was that if we're going to engage with Revision for a no-cost opportunity to get, uh, a DC fast charger, the town would not take a step to undermine that agreement and make an agreement with another vendor within 500 feet of this location on town property.
What, what town property do we own within 500 feet? What other town property do we control within 500 feet? Is this 500 feet from there?
Uh, the, the proposed location would have been, would be, at least from, you know, a very first look, would be the train station. And I did measure it out. I don't know if Town Hall, if our space is out here, or within 500 feet of that. I don't, I don't know if there's actually any town-owned property. I don't have that map in front of me.
Is, is Community Center owned by the town?
We actually have rights to the parking, part of the parking lot in there.
The Magnolot's owned by the town that we rent.
Control part of that Community Center parking lot, like 20 spaces, but honestly, they're all leased out to other people at this point.
Right, so I think that, I think the point of the exclusivity is that the town doesn't pivot from this agreement and go make an agreement with another vendor six months from now to do a, a DC level charger, DC Level Three charger on town-owned property, and the, and the radius of the 500 feet is what Revision has agreed is a reasonable distance.
Or is that, was it, I thought he said that this was just a letter of intent so that he could go get money, and then we have to sign.
Absolutely. This is a letter of intent for us to work together for them to go pursue the grant funds.
Right, so this is a letter of intent, and wouldn't it be that, once we have the leases in place, then, I don't think, I, the way I heard it was that this is so that they can get, we're not going to go out and find somebody else to do it while they're getting the grants and all that kind of stuff. Once they get the grant, and once the things are built, then that kind of goes away, whatever we want to do after that, because they're leasing three spaces, or five spaces, or whatever. I guess it's four spaces.
It's four, yeah, the, the requirements.
Then it would be applied to that, those four spaces, and maybe that parking lot, but after, after it's built, and am I not, what I'm saying, is that correct? James?
Oh, I, thank you. Typically, um, we would, we would, in the license agreement, need to maintain, um, some exclusivity, um, for a period of time, absolutely. Now, the, the, the 500 feet, um, first of all, just clarify that it is only on the pub town land. It isn't, just, as, as somebody said, if a, a private company decided to put one up right next door to ours over at the property line, then that's just our bad luck. The reality is that these actually, um, John mentioned that they're 100,000. They're actually, uh, for the whole station, would probably cost a million dollars, um, and Efficiency Maine would pay for 80% of that. So we, so we would be left with, um, 20% of, of whatever it is. If it's, it could be one, 800,000, it could be 1.2 million. It's very, very unlikely that a private company is going to do that. Certainly, um, any of the businesses in Freeport, it would have to be another charging station operator, and, and I can name them on a couple of fingers, the companies that are doing this around the country, and, um, Maine isn't part of their target market. They're looking at, you know, New York, LA, those kind of locations. So this would be a great opportunity for Freeport to have a cutting-edge station, um, that if, if we aren't able to get this money from Efficiency Maine, it won't be available again. This is part of the Biden, um, initiative for 500,000 stations across the US. So once that money goes away, it will be down to a company to fit the million-dollar bill themselves, and the, the, it doesn't pencil. So that's why, you know, we, even with that 20% match, need an exclusivity, um, for, you know, a certain radius around where our, our stations. And it may not need to be 500 feet. All I would say is, in the LOI, it allows us to work with the town, to identify sites that are mutually agreeable, right? So, so we can, we can, uh, take a deeper dive into working with the utilities to understand, can they give us the level of power, which is very high, um, at that location, for example? So, you know, that takes time, and we don't, and it's June the 22nd is the deadline for this, uh, application. So we can throw our time and, and, and resources at this between now and the application time, um, and put a really good, a really good case for the town of Freeport. And then, if we're approved, we would then enter into negotiations with you again, come back to the town council, um, and present a license agreement. And then, when we know where our location is, that we would, we could be talking more specifically about, yeah, we don't need a 500-feet exclusivity, but we do need it for this parking lot, for example.
Okay, thanks, James. That's helpful. That's helpful, yeah.
Can I just add some comments? So if, if you guys take action on this tonight, at the end of the day, I'm the one that needs to sign it, and there's some things in here, to be honest, that are making me nervous. So if that's what you're going to do, there's a couple of things in here I would want to make sure that you guys are addressing. One is on page one, the third whereas, it says, "These would be installed at little or no cost to the town." My understanding is we are talking about no cost. A little cost to somebody else might be a big cost to us. We don't know if we're going to have money, so I think that's something we need to be really clear on. I am very nervous about number seven, as Ed raised the exclusis, exclusivity, not saying that right. I feel like it really, there needs to be some council discretion on which side is appropriate. I don't feel like that's a decision I can be, should be making. This would tie us into, for two years. So if this didn't work, we're kind of giving those rights away for them to find a site. So I think having you guys discuss what specific town property would be really beneficial, I think number eight, we could fix by just acknowledging that we would all need to comply with, um, the Freedom of Information Act under state law. And then the other thing, which we haven't talked about, but was also a guiding principle in the village, we, we do want EV charging stations, but we also want to be a downtown forum, we want to be accessible. So if we're talking about installing four chargers on EV property, are, are any of those going to be designed in space and their charger itself to be accessible to all users in Freeport, even those who might have a, you know, special plea for accessibility purposes?
And, and, no, this will come up, I know that the accessibility issue is a requirement of the Efficiency Maine grant that's part of this project, but to Caroline's point, it should also be in our letter of intent, since we're not signing that Efficiency Maine.
I think my concern is I don't know if the, like, for parking stalls, the America with Disabilities Act requires a certain number of spaces be accessible. I don't know if the EV charger requirements, John, you know more about this than I do, have caught up with that, so if I, I don't know if there's a minimum to make them accessible. So that's a question. And then the final comment I'll offer you is that this hasn't been reviewed by the attorney. So if we make changes, if you do make a motion to approve this, is that something you want done before we execute it? That's my laundry list.
Okay.
Big ask for some hard decisions, but it's what I really feel like you guys would need to work through if we're going to do something tonight.
So here's a question, how binding is a letter of intent? Isn't that what we're talking about? And it all ends on the 23rd of June, right?
22nd, yeah.
Or 22nd of June, then that's only a month away?
Yeah, I don't know if they need to really walk out of here with something tonight, and I think you could talk about these things in put conditions, or give directive, or if it could come back on the 6th. I don't know what their, how tight their timeline is. It sounds pretty tight, but.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's a month away, and we would know when in a month whether this is viable or not, correct? James? I'm looking at you.
I'm sorry. We won't hear from the, from Efficiency Maine, uh, whether we've been approved or not. There's a specific date, it may well be in July sometime, um, but, um, just, just some, um, suggestions. First of all, the Freedom of Information, um, uh, clause, I would say that shouldn't be a problem at all. The accessibility, we could definitely, we'd be happy to write something in to the letter of intent on that. After we've reviewed what the requirements are by Efficiency Maine, we will be happy to, um, meet those requirements and provide those to you. And I'm just trying to think, what was the other, oh, the no cost. I think you, you know, it, it, that's something that bothered me as well in the LOI, um, because clearly we're offering to do this at no cost. So, um, that would be something that we could even amend now, if.
Okay, it sounds like they're solvable things. Josh, did you want to, for a comment?
Yeah, but thanks, I'll be real brief, too. Josh Olens, uh, at the Talbot Farm in South Freeport. I'm also on FSAB, and obvi, as Valley said, we're very strongly in favor of this. I wanted to clarify something, if we could, with you. We're talking about Level Three chargers within the 500-foot radius, right? Is there any restriction towards Level Two chargers within that 500-foot radius as well?
Is that a question to me?
That's to you, yeah, sorry. I'm looking at you, but you can't tell.
I'm sorry.
Where's it coming?
Is there a restriction? I, I don't think so. No, I, I.
The way it's worded in the agreement.
Review that again, uh, for sure, but. Review that again, for sure, but, but it's DC fast chargers are what really impact.
As, as I thought, good. So, and that's to say that these are extremely expensive and extremely unlikely, and only a few people know how to install and operate them. And we're very well protected there. The last two things I would say is that this money will walk. If we don't accept it, it will go to the next town. Brunswick was gassed it, somebody else will take it, as will our visitors. They will have more reason to go elsewhere. I'm an EV driver. When I'm driving out of range, I check where the level three chargers are. I don't go to a level two charger when I'm out of my range. And that's exactly how you will all be driving your EVs eventually, when you get them, when we get them. You'll be driving locally on your local charger, and then when you're traveling, you'll need to charge at a fast charger. This is a traveling charger and this is connecting the dots on the East Coast infrastructure. I'll stop, looks like you wanted to say more.
Yeah, just, I had one thing. Thank you for your comments. There, there is actually an equitable element to this for people that want to transition to electric vehicles that live in residences that are either multi-unit or they rent a home or they park on the street. There's many, many use cases that don't lend themselves to having home charging. So, fast charging stations are the only, only solution for those folks. And this would actually be something that we would promote to locals. This isn't just cashing in on, on travelers. This is, this is, you know, Revision Energy has a mission to support our, our, our community. So, that would be number one, to support Mainers and, you know, New Englanders, New Englanders in general. But it is, it is, if you own an EV, it's critical to, to have local access to public charging. And as you'll see over at LL Bean, that whenever I go there, I can never use their level two stations because they're always sitting there. People have to sit there all day to get a full charge. Whereas these DC fast chargers, 20 minutes might be just enough for you to be able to get 100, 150 miles. And that's good enough for you for the next week, maybe.
Yeah. Thanks, James. That was my thought as well. People who are traveling on a vacation to Bar Harbor Acadia might be looking for a place to stop and charge along the way and much rather have them stop in Freeport and charge and spend some money here rather than stop on a rest stop on the turnpike and top somewhere somewhere else. So, the level three in particular is a good sort of waystation charger kind of mode. So I think it's a great idea. Yeah, but I think we can address the concerns that were brought up on confidentiality and exclusivity and the cost. So we could just, since this is just a letter of intent, we can add those to our endorsement tonight, saying endorsed pending the resolution of these three items, and then if they're resolved, the manager can sign it afterwards. So we don't have to keep bringing it back. And then, when we do the license agreement, we can dive into the nitty gritty on the boundaries of exclusivity. Does that all make sense to you guys? Okay. Do you have a question there, Council Bradley?
Well, I, I like your solution because it keeps us out of negotiating it tonight and we don't know what we're doing. But I also am reminding myself that I thought I understood what the exclusivity was last time. And now I think I understand what we would be willing to approve this time, but I'm not sure. So, rather than bring it back, give the counselors a chance before Caroline signs it to, to raise a, a concern after you get your final language in order.
What about if we just adjust exclusivity to be determined when we negotiate the license agreement? So acknowledge that there's some exclusivity.
If you take exclusivity out of this altogether, I'm happy as, as I can be. But right now, it's, it's very clear that, well, I shouldn't say it's very clear. It, it, it looks more like full-blown exclusivity for a two-year period throughout the town than it does 500 feet in a parking lot that the town owns.
I, I would add a sentence to that, to say, we, you know, the, the terms of the limits of the exclusivity, you know, will be negotiated during the license agreement.
That's fine with me.
Something like that.
Sure.
That's still gonna make me lose some sleep tonight.
So there'll be no exclusivity in this agreement at all?
I, I just feel like you're leaving it so open if you don't give some indication as to your preferred site.
But Dan's right. We could do that in the license agreement, as long as you don't do something that conflicts with that in this agreement. So if you're gonna leave this language in here and hope that you're gonna clarify it in the license agreement, I don't agree with that. If you take it out of here and you want to leave it to the license agreement to determine the limits of exclusivity, you could say now, we will, we will negotiate exclusivity in the license agreement. Fine with that. But don't leave this language here because it's so broad that you're gonna have to fight yourself to death. You got to wrestle with yourself when you get to the license agreement.
But I think James is saying they need some guarantee that we're not gonna go out tomorrow while they're trying to get their ducks in a row to make this work and.
Right.
That's up to them. Tell them what we want.
I want this, too. I mean, I think this is a great deal for the town. And please don't misinterpret anything I'm saying. I just want to make sure we do it in a way that's clear.
Can't we give our town manager the ability to change all these things based on what we've said and have, you know, maybe two counselors involved with that to make sure that the flow? I mean, I think, again, most of us are in favor of this. This is gonna go forward in some way, but just not as written.
And that's what we're saying tonight, right? To give Caroline the ability to sign it, because this is just a letter of intent.
Right, but you're giving exclusive rights for two years for them to figure out.
No, no, we don't, we don't like this. We like the idea of it based on what we've talked about. So we want to, we want you to change this to be correct, so you feel comfortable signing it.
I would agree with Ed, to be honest. Like, I would strike that. I'm not comfortable leaving this so vague in this agreement.
And you would negotiate that with them.
And I feel like you guys should really be negotiating that with them in a public setting.
When we get to the license.
Before we sign the letter of intent.
If you'll allow me, I think I've got the, 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 what the square is. I think I can put the language together for this, the exclusive one, and give it back to you for review soon. I mean, tomorrow.
Not tonight, okay.
To, to do it tonight is nuts.
Can we do this on June 6th or whatever it is?
We can do it the next meeting.
We, we don't, we meet again until June 6th. Application's due June 22nd.
But they know we're gonna go, like, you know what I mean? We've told them, you know, hey, we're moving forward.
And we can share the language we're using with James so that he can give us feedback about whether it's acceptable or not. We don't have to wait for every meeting to have this conversation.
I'm also hoping that if we deal with it tonight, we don't have to take it up as another addendum.
Look, I'm not comfortable with this language. Just one vote.
All right. Do you have something to say, Mr. Mann?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, go for it.
Thank you. At the last meeting, Council of Fornia brought up the idea of getting some proposals from other contractors, companies. Did you guys do any of that?
We haven't put out any RFPs. They approached us and nobody else.
It seemed like a pretty good idea to me, and I was hoping you'd go forward with that. This, this outfit wants our packing spaces for 10 or 15 years. They don't want to pay us anything. They want to use a million and a half dollars of grant money. Seems to me that there might be another company might make us a better offer. Second point is, the last meeting, the discussion was clearly packing spaces near the train station. Tonight, under this agreement, second whereas, packing lots. I think you're all in agreement that we're not talking about packing lots. Even down the bottom here, it says, under number two, it says, agreed upon location. So at the very least, you've got to strike packing lots. I think you all agree with that. Hope you do. Second, another point I'd like to make is, what is a deadline? We've heard, already tonight, we've heard two different dates. Well, maybe sometime in July.
Well, I mean, June 23rd, they have to have the application in.
Well, maybe sometime in July, he said.
That was what we might hear back.
That's when they'll hear back, sometime in July is when they, whether they get the grant or not. But June 23rd is when, is the drop-down date or drop-dead date. They have to have it.
I hope you're right. That's not the way I heard it.
It's in the material, Mr. Mann.
Good. Good. The other thing that was clear to me at the last meeting was 200-foot radius, not 500 feet. So what happened between, was there some negotiation or, or was I just not hearing it right? I checked with other people in this room who said they thought they heard 200 feet.
That was an example that I used as a, as an example to, to define what the exclusivity range might be.
Okay. So, so we've gone from 200 feet to 500 feet.
We've gone anywhere. We're just proposing a 500.
In the proposal, I understand. This is a proposal you want to vote on. So, I just want to be clear that what I'm hearing from you folks is the 200 feet is within municipal owned property only.
Right.
Right?
I heard, well, it's 500. It's 500, not 200.
So, so why do, why do we need to go 500? You know, the main barn down in Wolf's Neck is 100 feet long. So get that in your head. Twice the distance of the main barn, you're only gonna allow four people to charge cars. And we're trying to convert this country over to electric? I mean, give me a break. We need, if you're really gonna do this, we need charging stations. We don't need to limit, limit them.
I think, yeah. Yeah. Do you have any other comments?
Good. Okay. I do agree, and I was glad that Carolyn, the manager, brought up the little or no cost because I think she made the point very well, but it was a point that I also wanted to make. He says no cost. Why did he put in here little or no cost, what you say? So that's gotta be taken care of. I think you guys agree with that. I also think, I also think the location needs to be in this, you know? I don't think that should be put off for later. It's a very important thing to know where this is gonna be, if you're gonna give this guy's the rights for two years to develop this property. The other thing that I wanted to bring up, it's been mentioned quite a bit, but the confidentiality, the provisions of this agreement and all information related to this agreement, that the DC fast charging stations or funding applications that is shared between the parties shall be treated as confidential for a term of no less than two years. And I think you guys agree you want to take that out.
We're talking about removing that.
What I, what I found that may help you with that is, in the, in this proposal to get the grant money, there's specific language in here that says, "A condition of, of accepting any public funds under the agreement, recipient hereby acknowledges and agrees to, that the documents and information relating to recipient's project and incentive award in this agreement, other than information designated as confidential by statute, may be treated as public records under the Freedom of Access laws." So, on the one hand, they're asking for confidentiality, and then, in the application itself, there's exact language that says they can't get that unless it's by statute. So I think you ought to incorporate that language specifically over here, and then you'll be consistent on both parts.
Anything else you got? If you could wrap up your comments, we, we need to move along. Is that all you got?
By the way, I think the gentleman said that he hadn't seen the application. It was right here on the counter. It's massive.
Okay.
I assume you guys got that in your package.
We do, yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments, the council?
Comments from us?
Yeah, sorry.
What if, what if we just put something at the end that says this agreement is null and void after a licensing agreement is signed or X number of months from when it's signed? That way it shows, hey, we're ready to go forward, but we're putting all of our eggs into the licensing agreement. So this, the, the two-year thing doesn't matter if we don't end up getting a signature in two months. That's enough for, or three months, I guess, because we're gonna hear back in July. That gives us a month's worth at least of negotiation time. Would that make everyone comfortable?
Will that give them what they need?
Well, that tells them.
I mean, they need to go get the grant. I mean, what, the problem is, I think, is that they need an exclusivity so that they can go to the revision, not revision, uh, Maine, huh? Maine, Efficiency Maine, sorry. I'm having a tough time up here tonight. Efficiency Maine, so they can say, yeah, the town wants to go forward with this. And that's what, that's what that whole exclusivity and all this is about, so they can get that. And then they sign the agreements and leases, and that, that gives us another opportunity to refine this. But this is only a letter of intent.
Right.
And I don't think a letter, correct me if I'm wrong, Ed, but a letter of intent says, yeah, this is what we intend to do as of this.
Depends what the letter of intent says. You gotta read on.
Okay. So it's a binding? Is it, is it a binding?
Sure.
If we decide that we don't want to do this later? I mean, after they've got, gone through all of it?
Not, not, I mean, you know, come on, we're a lawyer up here.
I don't want to do that, but, no.
But there's a provision in here that says, you know, that they get equitable relief if we breach this agreement. They can go to a court and get an injunction to force us to do what they, it's in this agreement. So it's an enforceable agreement. Nothing wrong with that.
Right.
But let's make sure we know what.
Exactly. No, I, I don't disagree with you. I think that's, that's.
My proposition would be to endorse this with the changes to confidentiality, writing in accessibility and clarifying that there's no cost, and clarifying that exclusivity. We understand there will be some exclusivity, but we will still determine that at a later date. But the, the, acknowledge there's some, before we sign this. But if you're, you guys are okay with it, if we make those suggestions and say Caroline's author, authorized to sign this pending those three suggestions, if she's not comfortable, I'm sure she will come back to us and say, are you guys okay if I sign it with this language or this language or this language?
I'm pretty sure it's gonna come back to you if you make that motion. I'm just being honest.
The alternative is, we, we have to bring it up again on the sixth, that's why I'm kinda pushing it.
I feel like if you're leaving, if you're leaving the discretion of the exclusivity up to me, I'm gonna, I feel like, I'm, I feel like you're not giving me the clarity I need to be able to move forward with a decision. I'm not getting that out of the six people up here.
Yeah.
Can I try that just quickly?
Please.
I mean, what I've heard is that the exclusivity that is needed is a 500-foot radius for four spaces on a parking lot that the town owns, to be determined specifically, the location to be determined specifically, in the licensing agreement. What you need now is an indication that we're willing to do that in the licensing agreement, limited by those factors. The 500-foot radius, the four spaces, and a park, a town-owned property. And if we're willing to, to say that in this agreement, you're willing to go forward and see through negotiation which of these town-owned properties or parking lots are the right ones for you.
Indeed, yeah. And we need to obviously pin down the exact location in time for submitting our application, right?
I get that.
So, this is something that will happen very quickly. I know that our project manager has, has done some tentative analysis. He's been out, done a site visit. So, pretty quickly, we should be able to identify for you which location it is. But this letter of intent is more as it states, it's just an intent, and to move to the license agreement if we get the funding. So, you know, the, if, if you prefer, we could, we could make it so that the, the letter of intent doesn't extend beyond the point where we've, we've heard back from, you know, if, if, for example, Efficiency Maine doesn't approve us, then, you know, it could, it could be void at that point, for example. So, you know, if that's a sticking point with you, this long-term, you know, two years of exclusivity for the LOI, then we can make that pretty sure. But, but assuming we get the funding approved, we would then need to move quickly to, well, not quickly, but we need to move, make a good faith effort to, for both parties to move toward the license agreement. And that, no doubt, is gonna come up for, at the council.
So how about, to address some of the concerns, why don't we say that we're thinking this is gonna go by the train station? If it's a different location, come back to us and we'll modify the letter of intent.
But he's saying we can limit it to when they get the decision.
And then, oh, the time as well. I'm saying locate, the location of the train station. I'm saying locate, the location of the train station and the time, we can give them, you know, six months from the time it's executed. The, you know, letter of intent's good for six months. Right? We can leave it to somebody else to work out the wording of that. You guys okay with that?
Okay.
Does that?
So I think what I'm, if I get all the points that I think we want to include in this, is that we would endorse the letter with changes to indicate that it's good for six months only. The intended location is the train station, but we'll entertain others if, you know, at the council, if they want to change that. The confidentiality is removed and reference to freedom of access statutes are incorporated. We'll add some language about accessibility, and we'll clarify that it's no cost.
And within the train station, it is a 500-foot radius with four, for town-owned property?
500-foot radius on town-owned property, no larger than a single lot, you know, the specifics of which can be determined later, but that's our intent.
I'm fine with that.
With that?
Okay.
So, somebody want to try and make that motion? I'll read it, and somebody can do that, yeah. So I would suggest a motion that says something along the lines of, be it ordered that the letter of intent and exclusivity agreement with Revision Energy for installing Level Three EV chargers on municipal property be endorsed after changes are made, incorporating reference to a location that is intended to be at or near the train station, a, the removal of the confidentiality, paragraph number eight, and reference made to the Freedom of Access Act statute, the clarification that this is at no cost to the town, that the letter of intent is good for six months, and that our, we acknowledge that there will be some exclusivity asked of us, and our intent is that it will probably be within a 500-foot radius on a single town property, the specifics of which can be determined prior to the signing of the license agreement. And be it further ordered that the town manager be authorized to execute and endorse any documents required.
I can sleep tonight without.
Second.
No, would you move, all right. So I'll move that, and Councilor Lawrence second to that?
Yeah.
Fair enough. Any other discussion?
And that's the amendment, so this is the amendment to this.
No, that I just amended it as I read it, so it's, it's a new motion, yeah. All right. Any other discussion, clarification?
Does that work for James?
It does, thank you.
Okay. All right. See no other discussion? Are all in favor of that motion, that extended motion?
Aye.
I saw six hands. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, everybody, for the discussion. That was very illuminating and helpful. And thank you, James, for sticking around and for offering to do the project.
Thank you all, appreciate it. Have a nice night. Thank you.
Okay.
I hope you can.
Okay. Item 100, 100th item of the year, 100-23 to consider action relative to the dispersment of cemetery perpetual care funds. We have a finance director to explain what that means.
Yeah, so annually, I come before you, usually just right before Memorial Day, and ask for a dispersment of funds from the cemetery trust out to the cemetery associations based on what the town budgets for maintenance and care for veteran graves at each of the cemeteries, as well as what is earned through investment income in these trusts. The last few years, we have not had investment income that we have paid out of the trust, given the performance of the interest component of the trust. And we've had some feedback from the associations that they are struggling with the ability to maintain those, their land without the additional investment income that is earned. So what I have before you is kind of two-part, one piece that I just described, we do annually. The actual first be it ordered that I have proposed before you is to actually transfer funds from the principal component of the trust into the interest component of the trust, so that we can give the interest component a one-time boost in order to be able to furnish the associations with their investment income that does get earned annually. The, I can pause for a moment and ask if you have questions, or I can possibly give a little bit more information if needed.
Fair to say you want to take some of the chunk of the principal and disperse it?
I want to take, yes, I want to take a chunk of what's been held in principal trust and transferred over to the interest side, so that we can, yes, disperse the interest payments. Yep. And I can tell you from a historical standpoint, the reason the interest component kind of got into this situation is at one, at some historical point, I believe we were paying out the veteran allotments out of the trust, you know, we would, we would account for them out of the interest portion of the balance of the trust. And when you do that on top of paying out the interest, at some point, you're gonna overspend, especially in low-rate environments, right? When you're not actually recouping, you know, a high enough amount to be able to add to the principal. So that's, that's really what I'm asking. We have a game plan go, or I say, I have a game plan going forward, so that we are just paying out the interest earned on an annual basis, and the veteran allotments are now actually budgeted for within the general fund, and is part of your operating budget that you see this year, so.
Councilor, again?
I think you just answered my question, Jessica, but the total, the dispersment that we're making an action on here is the $28,407.
I didn't hear the last part of your comment, I'm sorry?
That the dispersment that we're affecting with the, with the order is the dispersment of the $28,407, the total.
That is the total, yes. So the first be it orders, be it ordered is to allow me to transfer the money over, and then the be it further ordered is the total payment that will be made out to the associations.
Wanted to make sure I had that straight in my head. Thank you.
Yep, yep.
Makes sense. Questions for Jessica?
I guess I'm hearing that in the past, we took too much principal, and we didn't have to supplement the interest that we weren't earning.
Yeah, we just, we just basically overspent the interest component. Like even in a poor rate environment, we didn't stop paying out interest investment, you know, we were paying them flat amounts. Yep.
Now we're adding more principal to interest, right? To up the interest payments, which we're going to pay. And what I think I'm hearing is that we're not earning that, the portfolio, or the, we're going to supplement that through our operating budget. That's my question. Are we using the?
We have been, and we will continue to pay the veteran allotments out of the general fund. It's been at least that way, I'm going to say, for the last 10 years.
If we have had the operating fund or the general fund, why did we fall so far behind? Why didn't we just pay for it as we went along and kept, kept up the balances without?
I don't know that I can adequately answer you that. It was in a negative state prior to my, my time here at the town.
So the backstop to all of this is our general fund?
No. The, what you happen to see in the, in the second half of the be it ordered is a combination of what we pay out of the trust and what we pay out of the general fund. That, that's, that's been in place longer than I've been here.
It may be, but I guess my question is, if the trust isn't earning much, then we supplement that with the general fund?
No.
No.
No, we do not. What gets paid out of the trust should and is only the interest that they earn. At some point, something happened to cause those interest balances to decrease, lower than what they were earning. My assumption is, is that at one historical point, we were paying out either flat dollar amounts, or there must have been some other type of agreement or payment made to the associations that may not have necessarily been based on what was actually being earned, whether it be, you know, a flat amount per cemetery, for, per gravestone. I'm not, I'm not 100% sure on the full history of it. I just know that we were in a negative state, and we've tried to take the approach over the last few years to not pay out the investment income in order to build that balance back up. My estimation is it would take another, probably, on some of the larger associations, it would probably take another two years before I would be able to make a payment out if we did not do this one-time transfer.
Counselor Pillsbury?
Is there any additional revenue coming into any of these cemeteries from any other source?
Not into the town. The associations are now, my understanding is the associations are now responsible with any additional plots that, you know, that may, that may come in, but the town does not receive any additional funding, or hasn't in my term here, received any additional funny, I, funny, money. The, the only thing that may be is if someone chose to give a gift or a donation, they could certainly do so, and the town would come before you to accept that on their behalf.
Counselor Pillsbury, you want to read the motions, and maybe just, you know, I don't think you need, I don't think you need to read all the specific items, but maybe just mention the two total amounts.
That's usually appropriate, yep.
Be it ordered that the following perpetual care fund principal balances be transferred to the perpetual care fund interest balance, balances. Total 18,250. Be it further ordered that the following perpetual care funds be dispersed. Total investment, from investment income, $8,132.72. From the veterans allotment, $20,275, for a total of $28,407.72.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Lawrence. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, that's six hands. Thank you, gentlemen. Six to zero. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Next, we have two proclamations. One is regarding Arbor Week. Do we have anybody who is here to talk to us about Arbor Week? I know we can see the general gist of what it's about, and I think it came from the Tree Task Force, if I remember right.
Hi, Kristen Dorsey, and part of the Tree Task Force, which is a subcommittee of the Sustainability Board. And we started our work about a year ago after COVID passed by. And one of our first actions we wanted to take was to have Freeport declared as a tree city by the National Arbor Day Foundation. And one aspect of that is to have an annual Arbor Week proclamation. Many states do an Arbor Day. Maine happens to do an Arbor Week later in May, as opposed to the original April, just because of our growing season, because the idea is for people to get out there and plant So this is, it's a four-pronged, one is to have a proclamation read every year, one is to have a tree ordinance in place. We presently have a tree ordinance draft before the town attorney. I believe that's where it still sits. So we'd love to get that moving along and in front of you soon. And a celebration, ours will not be taking place during this week, because we're still trying to, you know, designate a spot that has the least amount of complications in terms of, you know, utilities and being in the right-of-way, and a place that the planting is actually, has the most benefit to the public. So, yeah, that's what the proclamation's about. This will be the first year that our town, I believe, has read one. So we appreciate it.
Thank you for the update. Any questions from the council? Or comments? Counselor Lawrence, you are up to read this one.
Okay, let's see if we can get through this. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees, and this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas in 1978, Maine first celebrated Arbor Week during the third full week of May and continues to do so. And in 1920, I mean, in 2020, sorry, the town of, Council of Freeport, Maine, established the municipal tree task force. And whereas, trees in our downtown landscape continue to thrive, contribute to a thriving economy, promote our sense of community, protect our natural resources, preserve our cultural heritage, and increase our overall well-being. And whereas, well-planned landscaping enhances the economic vitality of businesses, business areas by climbing, by calming traffic, boosting retail sales, reducing stormwater fees, providing shade for parking lots, roads, sidewalks, and buildings, and creating a visual gateway which welcomes visitors to Freeport. And trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of beauty, joy, and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, we, the town, Freeport Town Council, do hereby proclaim May 14th to 20th, 2023, as Arbor Week in the town of Freeport. And we urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Week and to support efforts to protect our tree canopy and woodlands. And further, we urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Daniele. Well done, Counselor Lawrence.
You know, we could go down the line.
I'll get here all the, does every one person have to read it, or can we?
Oh, like each one? We could, yeah. Any questions before we vote on this one? Okay. All in favor of the Arbor Week proclamation?
Aye.
Thank you. Six to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey.
Hey. Next up is item 102-23, another proclamation for EMS Week. And I, Counselor Daniele was trying to get out of reading this one. Is there anything that we should know about this, Chief Conley?
No, this is a shorter one.
It is definitely shorter.
Chief Conley's coming up tossing it.
I'll just keep, I'll keep it short, but I just want to take, thank you guys for taking the time out tonight and reading the resolution, and appreciate your endorsement in promoting the vitalness of our public safety agencies. Some of the things is that our, you know, EMS is broadened, is to involve, you know, the community, community CPR, community AEDs, and that such. So we've had some great successes this year in life saved, and, you know, I got 43 active members of the department that hopefully this coming week has reached out to the community and some businesses that, you know, give them some food, and they will come. So I'm looking at, basically trying to have something for, you know, all the crews through the week, you know, because some of them only work once a week and stuff, just for them to be recognized as that they're a valuable source of, you know, protection in our community. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah. It seems like taking five minutes out of our meeting to read a proclamation is nothing. Seems pretty insignificant compared to the time that you guys are all putting in on behalf of the town, so I appreciate that. Yeah. Please pass that along to everyone in the department. Counselor Daniele, how are you feeling about reading this one?
I'm ready.
Go for it.
Whereas, emergency medical services is a vital public service. And whereas, the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members to the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas, the members of emergency medical services And whereas the members of emergency medical services team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is important, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating emergency medical services week. Now, now therefore, we, the town council, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May twenty-first through twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, as emergency medical services week.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Lawrence. Any other questions on this one? Comments? Imagine this will be a pretty easy vote. All in favor of this proclamation?
Aye.
Unsurprisingly, that passes unanimously, so thank you, Chief, and thank you to everybody in the department for all you guys do. Next up, item one oh three dash twenty-three, to consider action relative to use of town property for Meeting House Arts to use Memorial Park. These are for their summer concerts on Saturdays starting in just a couple of weeks. This has your name next to it.
It does have my name next to it. So as part of the downtown vision charters, one of them, thank you, was to try out a place to have concerts in Memorial Park. So Adam, our town engineer, has been working with Public Works, who's going to reutilize one of the parklets that we had on a location that wasn't used this year, and convert that to a platform in Memorial Park so people can use it for concerts. So Adam is going to pull the temporary activity permits from the town to get that platform in place. And Meeting House Arts wants to be the first person to sign up to take advantage of it. So we could see other people come in and request to use town property if they want to have concerts here. But before you tonight is Suzanne Watson on behalf of Meeting House Arts seeking approval to use that on select dates.
Are there any questions for Ms. Watson?
She have something to say?
That's the question. Do you have something to say? Is there anything you want to add or tell us about before we?
You know I always do. I, I want to mention that this is also part of the opportunity to really continue the revisioning plan, where Meeting House Arts has been asked to be the arts and cultural lead for the town. And the three goals that are our assigned goals, one is music festivities, public events and such in town that enhance arts and culture. The, the second one is the infrastructure goal, which is to build infrastructure, to have infrastructure around town that allows a place for these festivities, music, and such to happen. The, the third one is public art, which we talked about earlier tonight, too, the idea that we can ultimately have some sort of more public art consideration as we do redevelopment in the revisioning process. So this really meets two goals, the two first goals, which is to have the music, to have the festivities, and to look at the infrastructure. The infrastructure goal, the second one in particular, I think, is the idea that we'll move this platform. And, and Adam and certain folks on, on Meeting House Arts Board have met and have determined specific spaces or places in the park where it was last year with a flatbed trailer body near the railroad tracks, and then over on the corner of Park Street and the Old Town Hall building, that those two locations will be the two. And we will also do, we are partnering with the Farmer's Market and Margaret Morfitt, and doing a survey that we'll be able to pass around, not only at the Farmer's Market, but also at the concerts on Saturday afternoons. So we'll get some feedback from the public in terms of how this is working in these different locations, with the idea that we'll ultimately be working on where a pavilion, a permanent, more permanent pavilion might be placed, again, as part of this infrastructure. So it's a, it's a grander scheme than just, it appears on the surface, and that's my addition.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Counselor Egan?
It's a comment, really, just in transparency. I'm a volunteer that helps put on and produce the sound at these concerts, and I don't get paid, and I do get a great seat at the shows. So I don't think that interrupts my ability to vote on this matter, but I just wanted to be transparent about that.
Would that depend on who's coming to do the show? No. You got the stones coming in? No.
That was kind of my question. Is the programming set, or are you still in progress?
John Albright, I should introduce John Albright. He's already spoken tonight. Excuse me. And John has really put together a marvelous program, which, I mean, we're in the process of now developing rack cards that will be put around at the B and, the B and Bs, at the hotels, at the campgrounds, at Visit Freeport. We'll be putting out this, you know, again, the Memorial Park and as well as Winslow Park concert series. So we'll be looking at how we can get this dispersed around town, but I don't know if you want to ask, John can list some of the acts that we've got coming, if you'd like.
No, packet, there's actually a schedule of dates and bands.
Oh, yes.
I assume it may change over time, but at least there's a preliminary schedule of acts.
John says no.
Pays to read your packet.
Mm-hmm. It does.
Got to get here two days early, though.
Other comments? I think, so for tonight, all we're voting on is the use of town property, so allowing them to hold the concerts in the park on these Saturdays. Oh, we do? Okay. Oh, it was? Now it's back? Joyce, if you want to talk, you are now allowed to talk, according to Zoom.
Well, this is Joyce Vieux down on Flying Point, and I just think that sounds like such a wonderful usage of Memorial Park. And the fact that a platform and a gazebo for future use sounds wonderful.
If only you'd thought of it sooner.
Thank you.
Joyce was, was instrumental in continuing to make that recommendation.
And I'm really glad to hear her on the, that this is, she was really the instigator of this concept. And I'd like to talk with you, Joyce.
Counselor Bradley, I think it's up to you to read the motion and ask any other questions or comments you have before.
John, are we paying these people to play, or are they volunteers? How does that work?
Yes, we are.
Just playing with the council.
Yes, these, all the performers.
Joyce, I think you're still.
Get her off.
There you go. Go ahead, Ed.
All right, go ahead, John.
Yes, the performers will be paid out of a, what's the word? An unidentified donor, a couple of years ago, gave ten thousand dollars for the specific purpose of paying musicians to play in Freeport. That's what this, a private, the unknown donor. And so that's been paying for a number of the acts or acts that go in Meeting House Arts during twenty twenty-two. And now it'll cover all of the expenses for the concerts in Memorial Park twenty twenty-three. What happens after this? We'll see. Thanks.
There's no other comments. Counselor Bradley, you're up to read this motion, number one oh three dash twenty-three.
Be it ordered that the use of town property from, excuse me.
Be it ordered that the use of town property from Meeting House Arts to use, no. Be it ordered that the use of town property.
Should be four, right?
For Meeting House Arts to use Memorial Park on June third, July first, July fourteenth, August fifth, August eighteenth, and September second be approved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselor Lawrence. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Six. Thank you, gentlemen. And thank you, Meeting House Arts, John Albright, Ms. Watson, thank you for all you do. I really look forward to those concerts. They're a highlight of my Saturday, and I'm sure many people in town, so thank you. Okay, we are up to our last item on the action part of our agenda before we do a budget workshop and an executive session. This one is one of four dash twenty-three, to consider action relative to the option of the town of Freeport to purchase a portion of land, a portion of a parcel of land located at zero lower Main Street, which is adjacent to Varney Road. This one also has your name next to it.
Sure. So many years ago, Ed asked for history lesson. Here's your history lesson, Ed. Many years ago, the town of Freeport and L.L. Bean did a land swap. The town of Freeport got the land that the Freeport Community Library is on today, and L.L. Bean got the library?
Okay.
Parcel? Could have been a piece of that, too, up there. And L.L. Bean got a piece of land that is between Varney Road and Lower Main Street, kind of where, like on Lower Main Street, across from the Shaw's Plaza where that banner is. And then if you go down Varney, it kind of surrounds that little utility building that's been sitting there. So before we even did the land swap, there was this agreement that the two parties agreed to do certain things. Two of those certain things for this piece of land, that if L.L. Bean decided to sell it in the future, we would have the option to buy it before they entered into a contract. And then the second was that they would consult with us on any development there. So prior to commencement, commencement of any development on that property, they would come to the downtown and make sure that was a benefit to the town. So L.L. Bean has entered into a potential agreement to potentially consider selling the land to the Freeport Housing Trust. So the Freeport Housing Trust often has different entities, so in this case, they would partner with a gentleman named Tim Gooch, and they would potentially develop the site into affordable housing. So before L.L. Bean enters into that contract, they are approaching the town of Freeport to see if we have an interest in purchasing that, or if we're willing to give up our rights to purchase that, and they can go ahead and proceed to enter that agreement. You have a motion here before you tonight that's very specific, that we would pass up our rights for this specific proper, project of about nine acres to be developed as affordable housing. As the developers go forward and do survey work and land analysis, there could be a little bit of tweaking needed to finalize the exact nine acres, but it would be in this approximate location. And then secondly, the second part of that, which they could come back, but part of that provision was, you know, we'll get the chance to determine if affordable housing there is a good thing for Freeport. So that's the second part of the motion tonight. Does the council feel like that's a decision that they can make, or do they need more information before they go there? And L.L. Bean is here tonight to answer questions, and you have Matt Peters from the Freeport Housing Trust, who would be the buyer.
Bradley? So we're going to move tonight to dissolve our option, but the deal is not going to be finalized until sometime in the future. Is there any, is there any problem with us if we decide to, to dissolve the, the option or waive the option pending the finalization and execution of the deal between L.L. Bean and the Affordable Housing Group?
So basically, what you want to do is you want to keep, you want to retain that option in the event that this project doesn't go forward.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. And the, the only other question I would have, and I assume John and others know what affordable housing means, I don't, but if, if somebody could sort of explain the, the income criteria for affordable housing, so we know who, who it will be that qualifies for this project if it's, if it goes forward.
I'm just tripping all this stuff. I'm in good company.
Hi, I'm Matt Peters with Freeport Housing Trust. We are looking at using financing that would allow people who make, and I don't have the numbers right up off the top of my head, it's around fifty-five thousand dollars or less is kind of the rough number. But it, it'll be for sixty percent of the area median income for the region.
Which were just republished yesterday.
So this is much lower than the, the market rate? Much lower.
Sixty percent of the area median income is the expected target.
Thank you.
Seniors, right?
Yep, fifty-five plus.
It's all seniors? Oh.
Yep. The, the development that we are looking at building would be fifty-five plus the property. Yep.
Okay. How many units?
The current plan is for a forty-two unit building.
Thanks.
Carolyn, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but if we waive the option on these nine acres, do we still have the option on the remaining parcel of land?
It was an old agreement. It wasn't super clear. We actually couldn't even tell if it was recorded. I think L.L. Bean's trying to be transparent and approach us. I don't know if they would have any objections.
We would not, and it was not recorded, so this is an agreement that was more of a, more of a handshake. It does have a signature on it, which makes it legally binding, but it was never recorded in the registry of deeds, and we'd be fine leaving the option for the town to purchase the remaining property on, on that parcel. So it's a fifty, fifty-two acres, something like that.
So you'd probably just want to get it, clarify that in the record in the motion, so that when we're all doing different things and...
Is this, there's no letter subsequent to this? This motion is what's required? You guys don't need a separate letter from the town saying we're waiving the parcel as voted on at the, the meeting?
Your minutes are going to reflect whatever action. I think that would be sufficient.
Okay. So the two things it sounds like we want to clarify in the motion are that we're retaining the option for the rest of the parcel, and that this is contingent on the project going through for affordable housing on the, on the property. Otherwise, we'll undo our waiver. So I'm not sure how to word those two things in the motion. Open to suggestions?
Read it as, read it as an amended motion?
Or we could just change the wording as we read it. Yeah. Yeah, do you want to take a stab at that? Or are you suggesting I should do that? We could just add another, be it further ordered on to the end of it, maybe something like that. You want to take a stab?
I'll try. Be it ordered that the Freeport Town Council waive its option to purchase a nine-acre portion of a parcel of land located at zero, zero, lower Main Street, tax assessor map twenty-three lot fifty-five, as currently owned by L.L. Bean, and for which L.L. Bean has the intent to sell to the Freeport Housing Trust or an affiliated entity thereof for the development of affordable senior housing. Be it further ordered that the Freeport Town Council determine that the proposed development of this subject portion of the parcel into affordable housing is a benefit to the town of Freeport. And be it further ordered that the waiver does not take effect until there is a firm agreement between the two parties for the purchase of the land, and that the Freeport, the town of Freeport does not waive its right of first, first right of refusal on the remaining portion of the subject larger parcel.
Thank you for that.
Close, Dave?
Second. Thank you, Counselor Daniele.
You, John, you're, you, what you read, continued the waiver, or executed the waiver upon execution of the documents between the parties, could it be upon the realization of the, the project, upon completion of the project?
They have to sell the land before they can do the project.
Yeah, they have to present right title and interest in order to apply for the funding. Okay, so a million things go wrong after the signing of the document, and the project doesn't go forward, we've given up our right to nine acres. We're taking the risk along with you.
I think you're being pretty clear that you're giving them the, you're waiving it to the, for the purpose of them selling it to the housing trust or entity thereof for the approximate nine acres for the development of affordable senior housing. I think if they switch, they would need to come back.
Sorry?
If they shift from that plan, I think they need to come back, because you're waiving it just for that.
Just for affordable housing?
They can't sell it to somebody else.
Okay. Good answer. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Just a concern, here we are again, affordable housing, and we're missing that middle section. And that, that bothers me, because we're going to have old people and rich people and old, I don't be rich. Young people to run the town or live here. I mean, that's, that's where we are. That's my concern.
Yeah. We need a doll. We need this, we need other projects in addition to this. I wouldn't want this, yeah. I don't want this not to go through, waiting for something different or better. And it's also not our decision, right, they're offering the land up.
Yeah, no, I know, and that's fine. I mean, that's, but it's, it's just.
Yeah, it's not enough.
We have a lot of this, and we have this, and it's the middle.
Maybe we could take an active step to work with landowners.
Yeah.
That have open land in the area that we want to see housing development. that have open land in the area that we want to see housing development, hypothetically such as Lower Main Street, and see if we could negotiate an opportunity to leverage parties in there to make some starter homes happen.
That would be awesome.
Like a great idea?
Yeah.
Your job.
Make it happen.
All right, any other comments on this motion as read by Councilor Egan? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Is everybody? Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you to L.L. Bean. Thank you to the housing trust for being willing to step up and make all these things happen. I hope it's smooth sailing and the project happens as quickly as we can, because we all know we need it. So again, thank you, guys, all for that. Okay, that concludes all the things that we think we're going to vote on tonight. But we do have an operating budget workshop and executive session. So for the operating budget workshop, we have Jessica here. We can make amendments to the budget tonight. We have one more meeting to make amendments to the budget, and the meeting after we vote on the budget.
Sure.
Is there anything that's new and different since last week that you need to tell us about? Not last week, but two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, yeah. I have no new information.
Okay.
We adjourn?
We still got the executive session. What new and different items does the council have that they want to talk about? Either additions to or changes to the budget, or questions about the budget?
How would a counselor who wanted to amend the budget go about that so that everybody gets a chance to look at it and think about it, and then act on it? Should it be in writing prior to the June 6 meeting? What's the process that we should use?
I mean, it's been handled many different ways. I think if a counselor wanted to make an amendment and bring it forth on the table for discussion, unfortunately, with a work trip I have going on next week, my laptop is actually packed, because I'm that much of a preparer. So I don't have my laptop to make the change, but I do have it on a flash drive that I can give Caroline to possibly pull up on the TV, where you can see what the real-time impact will be for any changes that are made. But we can handle that any way that council sees fit.
So you can come to the meeting on June 6 or June 23 and make all the amendments you want?
Well...
As far as you're concerned. I don't think we should, but that's...
Yes.
And the one comment that Jessica made a couple of weeks ago is if we bring up an amendment on the, I think it's June 20?
June 20 is...
That's difficult for her to incorporate the changes and come up with all the numbers in real time. So I think if we want to change it, I would do it tonight or on June 6, is what I think we should try and aim for if we can.
Councilor Pilsbury?
So the items that you have listed, I think it's pay, I don't have the page. Outside agency analysis, and then there was the page before that, list of proposed changes to the FY '24 to '28 capital program. Those are still items that we need to, they're not included, correct?
That is correct. Nothing on that list is in the current budget.
So does it make sense for us to have a first pass at that list and get an idea of what we may or may not want included?
I do, I would just like to mention, if you, for your consideration, sorry, I'm trying to find that same page that you're on. For your consideration with the outside agencies, I had mentioned to them that June 6 would be the meeting for them to come, being the public hearing, for them to come and talk about their requests or indications. So just not saying you can't talk about those tonight. It's certainly welcome, especially if there's solid majority for one way or the other. It might help guide them in what their discussion will be, or whether or not they actually even need to be here. So just wanted to full disclosure that.
Councilor Egan?
I'd like to propose that the, I can't get the exact number, $26,750 that is listed as an outside agency operating budget request, which is really a capital improvement for dugouts at the Hunter Road Fields facility, which is owned by the town. These would be capital improvements on town-owned property. I'd like to suggest that we, in the context of additional adjustments to the capital budget, that we move that $26,750 into consideration under municipal facilities in the capital budget, finding a similar dollar amount to adjust, so that we're not increasing the capital budget. But I think that's a, I think it's a highly required item, because I think it ensures the safety of children that play baseball out at those fields. And it's also a town-owned facility in which we're making a capital improvement. And the icing on the cake is that the league, the users, all of the leagues that use out there have agreed to provide all of the labor. So the $26,000 is strictly for materials.
Jake?
I would suggest that we do it out of the ARPA funds. I mean, I'm fine, or you can take something from the capital budget and move it to there. I think that that's an easy sell for the community, though, that we're using ARPA funds to do this, because it's an important community asset. I think that, you know, your precedent of putting it under the capital makes sense, because it does seem like a capital improvement. But in terms of an ease, ARPA may be simple. But I'll go either way.
Where is it now, John? Is it an operative?
It's not in there.
It says a request outside the door right now.
Which year would you put it in? On your capital budget?
2024. 2024, so it can get built later this year.
Can somebody explain, just generally, when you have money due in the capital budget in the current budget year, that is, the source of that money is?
I'm so sorry, I did not hear the question.
The reserve account for that capital item.
Okay, so it comes out of?
Capital reserve funds.
Money that the taxpayer's already paid and is sitting in a fund waiting for some worthy project like this one?
Correct.
It doesn't add to the...
Does not, it does not transfer over to an additional burden on the current tax levy.
Okay, which means that it does not add to...
If we added it to the operating budget, it would. That's my point, is moving it out of that.
I'm just trying to understand your point. Don't get mad at me?
I'm not, I'm trying to explain. I'm trying to move it out of the operating budget into a capital activity, because I think it is a capital activity to make improvements to town-owned property. Those kids deserve a dugout out there to be protected when they're playing baseball in thunderstorms.
I would support that as well.
So these other agency requests are for operating budget money asking?
Yes. It would, all the other ones would, everything on this list is not anywhere in the budget. There's, anything in here can be up for discussion on where council would like to see it. I am not in opposition to the Trittown Little League dugouts being taken from either the capital or ARPA. I think either option is viable. It is only on this list before you because of the timing of when the request came in.
How do you, how do you other guys feel about the Little League request? We got a bunch of nodding heads. We support adding that into the capital budget?
My only question is that we did it this way so that all of these would be taken up at once, and we would make prioritization determinations with all of them in mind. That was my understanding of how we got this list. You sent out an application, they all send it in, they're all, everybody's understanding was, you know, you'll take, throw them all in a basket, and we'd look in the basket and decide what we wanted to fund. And now, and I have no, look, I like dugouts, I like John, I like the kids. I don't want anybody to get electrocuted. So all of that is plus. My question is process? Is this right?
So I'm just going to interject quickly there. I think there was some confusion on the process. This is the first year that we have rolled out the extension to outside agency. The initial letter that was received came from Trittown Little League, which, for me and my capacity, had no correlation with a town committee and what I would consider initially, I mean, upon further review of the full request. Full disclosure, I don't go through all of these requests to see what they're asking. That's for council to go through and decide what they want to see in support for outside agencies. I don't read their full applications of everything that they're looking for. So when I see Trittown Little League, I'm not inherently associating that with Hunter Road Field. So I sent the application for them to fill out, and then, oh, okay, it's Hunter Road Field dugouts. Absolutely probably should have been considered separately and not part of this outside agency request. Would have been a little more clearer if it was a memo from the Hunter Road Field Committee that said, we feel that this should be done. Yeah. And/or staff, you know what I mean? Like, there were multiple other fingers that really could have, and, you know, in hindsight, if I were to read all of the applications and exactly what all the outside agencies are looking for to roll out, it might have stood out a little more grandiose to me that that is different. But I get what you're saying as far as process, and I agree with you. For the other ones, I would say that that does follow suit, because they're not overseen by town committees or staff or liaisons. So that would be my kind of suggestion or input on that.
Okay. Other question, comments on Little League? Should we direct Jessica to add that in for next time? What we direct her to do tonight, she'll bring back to us, and that will be what we present at the public hearing. So if we wanted to add something, we could say, add it tonight, so that when we have the public hearing, people will know it's in or it's out, and they can speak one way or the other.
It sounds like we're all in agreement that it should get funded somehow?
Yeah. Does that mean that if you want to add any of these other things, you've got to raise it tonight?
Yeah, or next, or on 6th, yeah, yeah. Matt, are you good with the Little League? I didn't catch any visible indication one way or the other. You don't have to have one, but I just want to make sure there's enough support for it, so if we add it, it's likely to stay in.
Yeah, I like baseball, I like kids. I don't want to see kids get electrocuted just like that. I'm on the same bandwagon that he's on.
Even though it's outside your empire.
That's in mine.
Over there, a lot, though.
Only this year. That's in mine.
I am certainly not opposed and in more of an agreement that this is very appropriate out of ARPA funding, given the timing of what we have to use ARPA funding for.
How much ARPA funds left? Your $400,000?
She said over $400,000.
I was just going to say, I'm feeling it's right around that $400,000 mark. And it has to, your funding has to be appropriated by the end of 2024. So, and this is a small drop in that amount, and yet it's worthwhile. And it's exactly what that funding was designed for, and it's not impacting our low-reserve balances as it stands, so. And it's not, and what may need to be maintained over time is going to be absorbable through what we have for Hunter Road Fields in the operating budget. You know what I mean? So it's not like it's a position that you're going to have to have funding next year for. That's would be my biggest proponent for the ARPA funding.
Any other items that you guys want to see changed before we do the public hearing? Additions, deletions, Councilor Daniele, and then Councilor Pilsbury?
I'd advocate for the downtown visioning contracted engineer to be paid for out of ARPA, too. I think that if we have projects that we want to move forward, and, you know, maybe this will come up at the FEDC meeting or whatnot as well, but I would argue that, I would advocate for that coming out and being funded with ARPA dollars, even if it's just to have it on the sideline and say, if a project comes up that we really needed something to get done for, I think that we've got limited resources in town, and we can't just expect everything to keep going, so we need to fund those somehow.
Yeah, I agree with the second part of what you said. Personally, I think knowing that it's available if we need it would be important. I don't know that I'd rush out and sign a contract for somebody to say, be on standby for engineering services, but if we come up with a project, and we may have one soon, and Adam says, hey, I've got so much on my plate, I can't take on another engineering project, then we say, yeah, here's a bucket that we've kind of pre-qualified for. Yeah. And I imagine that would probably come back to us, well, depending on the size of it, it might come back to us or not. Yeah, John?
Somewhat related to this, I'm wondering, I know it was either last year or the year before, I guess it was last year. We elected and picked off some one-time activities that were in the operating budget, and we used ARPA funds, and we actually were able to reduce the amount of increase on the tax levy. I would be strongly in favor, particularly since we're looking at a 6-plus percent increase in the tax levy, that we try and find as many of those one-time activities that are in the operating budget that are not related to a person who's been here and going to be here, and we're funding their salary for one year with one-year money. That doesn't make sense. But if there are other, if there are other items, particularly since the clock is ticking on that ARPA account, we don't have to have it spent by the 24th, by the end of '24, but we have to have it obligated, and we're making decisions on obligations for FY '24. So it doesn't give us much time after our fiscal year is over to actually have it obligated. But it seems like that may be an opportunity for us to reduce, to reduce the increase that we're looking at right now, which I stand by, because I think the additions that we're making are important, and in my single opinion, necessary for Freeport to move forward, particularly the staff additions and the pay adjustments, so that we can retain our staff. But if there are some other activities that are more one-time oriented, we found a couple hundred thousand of those last year and used ARPA funds for it.
Don't forget, we're going to be starting to build trails and all that kind of stuff. And that's going to take more than what's there right now. And those are things that we really, the visioning came down as like, this is something we should do, and that would, the trails would, we're trying to reduce everything, right? Cars downtown, emissions, all that. Trails allow people to ride their bicycles. I can't ride my bicycle to town now, because the bridges aren't done. As soon as they get done. And as soon as they're done, and more importantly, part of the reason why we got such a great deal on those bridges, right? The DOT dropped it by $600,000 was because we're doing these trails. So we need to have a commitment to getting those done. And here's the money that we can do, goes a long way to building those things. Maybe not all of them, but a long way to doing that, so.
Use the ARPA money into a, move the ARPA money into a in-town trail designated fund?
Yeah.
Long as it's spent before the end of 2026, you should be fine.
Well, the bridges will be done '25, right?
There you go. So just to address your commentary, John, I do just want to let you know of the almost $1.3 million increase in expenses, looking quickly, and I can get a more comprehensive list, but looking quickly, when you talk about one-time impacts that may come out, there's the $40,000 downtown visioning grant match amount. There's, I did increase paving by $25,000, because that was one of the items that we had paid out of, that increase came out of ARPA for this past year. So at some point, we will have to increase the operating budget for paving. But, you know, in full disclosure, this is, that's an option. There's also regional services. I believe it's the Sustainability Corp. wants to hire, committee wants to hire the Marine Conservation, or Conservation Committee, because it's in the title, wants to hire the Marine Conservation Corp. for labor on some of the bridges. That's like $18,000. So that might be a one-time thing.
So that's $83.
Yeah, yep. And then, in reality, that is about all I'm comfortable giving you right out of the gate, out of the majority of those expenses, because the rest relates to contracted services that we have with general assistance, dispatch, and ACO contractual increases, hydrant rental increases, Bustin's Island, the wages benefits, additional staff, and COLA changes. So those are the other major impacts.
Thank you for that quick on-the-fly analysis.
You're welcome.
If we use ARPA funds for trails, it's not enough to say we've put it in the reserve account for trails by the end of 2026? We actually need to pay it out by the end of 2026?
We need to appropriate it by the end of 2024.
Right.
And it would need to be spent by the end of 2024.
Spent, not to say it's in this trail account, but actually, okay.
It would have to physically be spent.
Right.
Yep.
And it could be spent on trail design, like we've got a bunch of that in the works.
Yeah. Yeah. Almost any, almost all of your downtown visioning projects can be looked at with some use of ARPA funding because you designated the loss of revenue. And, I mean, that's, these are projects that you can do if you have the revenue at the time, so.
So, does it make sense to you guys to, according to John's suggestion, take the $83,000 or whatever that final number becomes out of ARPA, take those items out of the operating budget, use ARPA money to pay for them, so our operating budget comes down, meaning our tax levy comes down, and maybe have a suggestion, the balance of the ARPA money, since we're getting up on the end of 2024, be allocated for whatever trail funding or similar downtown projects we can see the light to be able to spend by the end of 2026. And Jessica can come back on June 6th with a couple of recommendations, and we can work with her if we need to on that.
I think John's idea is a good one. I'm looking for ways to drop the, to everybody, I'm sure everybody is. But I think rather than we just jump to trails, which is one good thing, that we think about some of the other downtown visioning things that might compete with that, in our view, and before we make the call.
Sure.
So, I have a couple in mind, but, you know, they're, you know.
There's money that we need to spend by the end of 2026, that's the catch, yeah.
And transportation's going to have, you know, something. And we'll know better after Thursday whether we've got active transportation group or not. But if it is, then you're going to be talking about equipment, and you'll spend it in that next year. The other is, I know that Meeting House Arts has a significant expense for air conditioning and heating, and I would expect some of that would be very helpful if the town could, so they could private fundraise alongside ARPA money, it would be a win-win. But again, I don't know if anybody else agrees with that, but that would be something that I would like at least to talk about, in addition to trails.
At the next meeting, can we get an accounting of the ARPA money that we've spent? Because I realize we've also potentially committed some of the funding. I believe for FCS, there were thresholds. We said we'd authorize up to X amount initially, and then a further X amount. So, I just, before we go spending all of it, let's make sure we know what we have left to spend. And then I just had one quick question. For the request from Through These Doors, are they asking for $500 or $900? Because the letter says nine, and the form says five.
Five is all that is in the budget because that's what they received in FY '23. So, any increases would have to be added in.
Did they complete the Town of Freeport Human Service Agency request for funding?
Let me double check.
I've just, it's a small point, but it's listed 500 as their request, but then in the letter that they provide, they close by saying, "We hope that you will support us by allocating $900 to Through These Doors in your upcoming budget." So, I just didn't know what.
Which group is that, Matt?
Through These Doors. Who are they?
Through, Social Service Agency for Domestic Violence.
Victims and survivors of domestic abuse.
It's Social Services, they work with the police a lot, I think.
Yeah, their cover sheet says that they are asking for $500. So, if you're seeing another value.
Yeah, if you look at their letter that they wrote us.
Oh, they did a separate letter?
Yeah, it says, the closing paragraph just says, "We hope that you will support us by allocating $900."
Shouldn't they be going through community services for that?
I think they coordinate with community services. If I remember right, they get small amounts of money from a lot of different towns, and then they supplement with, yeah, here it is. So, the page after the letter is their form, or the Freeport form. They're asking for $500. Total agency budget of $2,422,173, $500 of which comes from Freeport.
Yes, and I didn't go through the letter, I went through their application to me. So, and $500 is consistent with what they've been appropriated in the past because I didn't change or increase anybody's contribution.
They serve victims and survivors of domestic abuse, dating violence, stalking, and human trafficking in Cumberland County. Can I go back to Jake's request earlier, the $30,000 for the engineering? That kind of trailed off.
I was going to bring it back up, don't worry.
All right. That would be, I think, in addition to the operating budget, which would impact taxes, or tax levy for this year.
I would suggest ARPA funding.
Is that, does that qualify for ARPA funding, to one-time engineering services?
That would be a contracted service that could be, yep.
Didn't we discuss using, potentially using salary savings? I know it's from open positions. I mean, I know it's taken from one pocket to the other, but because any salary savings at the end of the year, would go into the transfer, right?
General fund, yeah.
Yeah, it goes into fund balance at the end of the year if it's not spent within the fiscal year.
We presumably will have salary savings this year, and that technically would qualify from an auditing purpose, right? I mean, you, there wouldn't be an issue. You're basically just contracting for services that you wouldn't have staff to do, right?
Yeah, so essentially what would happen is the savings from this current fiscal year would default or transfer into fund balance. And if you had an amount, what we would do, because currently there's $675,000 use of fund balance. If you had an additional amount that you were thinking, I would increase that revenue side by that amount. So, that's the effective tax savings. So, if it was this $30,000, I would, you know, increase that to $705,000.
Just another option for us to consider.
I guess the first question is, do we, does everyone, does anybody else other than me value having the downtown visioning contracted engineer? And then we can decide how to fund it, right? Like, we're kind of going to go line item, are these worthy of being funded? Okay, now let's find out where we can fund them from.
I do. I mean, I think Adam's made it clear how much work he's got and how much capacity he has, and how much is on the downtown plate. And if we don't get him some help, we aren't going to, as much as we may want to add, just take the Bow Street LL Bean circle. I mean, we're going to need, if we do that, and I hope we do, we're going to need a lot of effort, then Adam can't be everywhere doing it all. So, I'm for that, I'm for communications, I'm for grant. You know, a lot of those things that we know we need, and I don't see where they are in the budget. And you're reluctant to suggest them because we're already at 6%. I mean, we're sort of, this is a tough year to be looking to spend more money. But yeah, I'm for that.
I would make them more project-specific. So, instead of saying general engineering stuff, let's say, we need engineering for the Bow and Main Street intersection, we need engineering for, you know, EV chargers or whatever else we've got, so that we know what we're spending it on. I don't have an opposition really to putting a bucket aside because it's the same money, we're going to spend it under one label or the other label. But I prefer to know in more detail which downtown projects you're spending it on.
That requires us to set some priorities right now that I wonder if we're ready to do.
No, because if we set the bucket aside, then Adam can come to us and say, "Is this a worthy project?" And we say, "Yes, take it out of the bucket." If it was to come from the operating budget, you know, if it wasn't, if we didn't have the ARPA money on the side, and Adam came to us and we didn't have a mechanism to pay, that would be the problem. So, either we need to set, you know, set aside something so that way he can come to us.
Right, or, right, or do we take it out of Matt's idea of salary savings? Yeah, yeah.
Unless it's July 2nd, and there is no savings yet.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not opposed to it.
Strong endorsement.
Yeah, especially if it comes out of ARPA funds, and it doesn't impact taxes, yeah. I'd also make a pitch for the farmer's market. I didn't think they were going to come back for more money. I thought we gave them seed money to get off the ground. On the other hand, $2,000 is not a lot considering what we get for that. Sort of a lot of bang for the buck for a very small amount of money, just to make it a better market. So, they're asking for $2,000. We can change the amount or.
I normally wouldn't be opposed to it, but right now, we're looking at, what, a 6.5% increase? I don't know that the rest of these really are something we should be spending money on right now.
But remember, there's a, there are a number of things that aren't, Jess is asking, because he's like, I mean, Jess was nice enough to sit down with me and sort of educate me, but there are some things that could come in between now and June that we don't know about yet that could reduce that amount, like new valuation and other things. True?
Well, yeah, your assessor sets the valuation of the town, and depending on where that comes in, it will have an impact on the mill rate.
But when, the date he'll come in with that, would be before we vote, right?
They don't know, they, he doesn't commit until mid-September, usually, sorry.
That might change the mill rate, but the effect is going to be no different, though.
Same.
Yeah, so it doesn't, it's not going to help anybody with their tax load.
Drops the mill rate, it does.
The evaluation went higher.
But the new valuation, as I understand it, isn't going to come from existing properties. It's going to come from new properties added to the rolls.
There's a mix. I mean, they go out and they review existing properties to see where they're at. I mean, you're going down a rabbit hole talking about what the assessor does, and I would not profess to know all of that. I will digress very quickly. In my first year as a finance director, trying to figure out what an assessor does, and argued, you know, "How am I, as the finance director, supposed to be comfortable over the numbers you give me without me knowing how you come to your numbers?" That lasted two months, and I said, "I'm good, just give me your number." So, you know, I would encourage, you know, maybe discussion with the assessor if there was something further. But I know that there's multifaceted approaches and impacts to the valuations. One, it's new valuations in town. It's valuations that have, properties that have gone away in town. It's changes to existing valuations, it's business valuations in addition to residential. So, I mean, you're talking a lot of, a lot of impacts. So, it's not just new valuation coming in, it's just.
Don't hold my breath.
Yes. Valuation amount will change. It's just not going to be solely from new valuation coming into the town. It's going to be, you make an improvement on your home, and now your home is worth more, so your taxes go up, not your neighbor's per se in that situation.
Again, I don't have to go into any more detail, but there are, sitting here, there's a business that's investing enormously in our town, and that new valuation's going to hit our rolls, and it hasn't hit yet some of it. So, that's going to come in.
You're absolutely right. There, in addition to all of those factors, there are new valuations that will be considered.
That's sort of what's giving me some solace. Thank you.
So, farmer's market, thumbs up, thumbs down? They are probably going to come next time and make their pitch as well, but I'm just looking for a sense of where we stand on it.
I'm for it, but I'd prefer to wait until you hear everybody else who cares to come in and make a pitch and give them all the comfort and encouragement we can together. Make it a communal evening.
Others?
Quick math, 20 vendors, $150, they're at $3,000, you know, just doing the math out. So, I guess I'd want to know, like, what their other costs are. Because I think they said it was about $5,000, so that does kind of get them to that break-even mark. But if they have some other revenue source, you know, maybe we could go without, you know, I don't know.
They do some sponsorships, too, I think.
Maybe like, we're tiering down or something, some sort of, I'd like to hear more information.
Fair enough. So, what I think we're hearing tonight for changes is add in Little League, add in engineering, and just figure out ARPA funding, accounting of what we spent so far, and what could be moved out of operating, and maybe some suggestions on how we could appropriate the rest of it.
Yep, just for my clarity, my initial understanding is that the Little League and engineering are, there's interest in that coming out of ARPA?
Yes.
Not necessarily, okay, so, yeah, so I have those two items under ARPA. There was a discussion about the paving. If I had to offer suggestion after conversation with the public works supervisor or superintendent, whatever the title is, I would probably just as soon leave that paving flat. He had initially proposed his budget flat for paving, and I reminded him that he actually has $100,000 more, but it's in the ARPA bucket. But I think he realizes between his staffing and where we're at in being able to get stuff done with everything else on the plate that that might be hard to actually meet. So, rather than add $25,000 into ARPA for that, I would just as soon pull that from the budget and leave paving flat. So, I feel pretty good about saving you $25,000 out of the operating budget.
Thank you, Jessica. I'm sure there'll be a bunch of people lining up now to say, "Since you saved $25,000, can I have some?"
But we can quickly look at this list and see that there's more.
Okay, anything else for tonight? We got another workshop and public hearing.
Thank you for your command of all these moving pieces. It's really phenomenal.
Yes. And good luck on your trip, wherever that takes you.
Great, thank you. All right, so next, next meeting, June 6th, I'll have, I won't do a full packet like I gave you this time, but I will give you updated sheets that kind of summarize each of the buckets and kind of like, if you were to do the order, what it would look like.
Yeah, and I would post something so that the public knows what they're commenting on.
Sure.
So, if the operating budget is not, if the operating budget is not changing, I guess we don't need, you could just repost what you gave us already.
Yeah, the only change right now for the operating budget is that $25,000 out of paving. So, I probably will print a new operating budget to reflect that. But yeah, the changes for ARPA won't impact any of the existing budgets in, at this point, nor does it change any of the capital budget, so.
I thought it was going to change the Conservation Commission's trail would come out and go to ARPA.
The $18,000?
Yeah.
If that's one of the items, I hadn't heard that one yet. It was one that I mentioned could potentially be changed.
I thought my understanding was that most of the ones, all those one-timers we were considering. I think it might be nice to have like a breakdown of, if you moved all of them, the rate would be reduced to this, and then we can kind of say. Because honestly, like, it's going to hurt no matter what.
Right.
So, like, whether we're at 6 or 6.2, is that, are people going to be less mad?
Right.
So, it might be better to get it done in one year and not have a big increase next year.
The other issue is that we've got a huge school budget coming up, right?
This year it was lower, yeah.
The lowest increase they've had in years.
Which I don't.
Lowest increase.
Yeah, they're a 3.5% increase with the, at the existing valuation.
Which is about as similar to our total.
That's what I just talked about.
And that's still a 700, and almost $730,000 increase. Yeah, from a value standpoint, it's similar, yeah. But because their budget is so much higher than ours, their percentage is so much lower.
Okay. Do you have everything you need?
I think I do, yeah.
And if you guys have questions, you can always.
Make a motion, we're going to executive session.
Pursuant to 1 MRSA 405, 6C.
Pursuant to 1 MRSA 405, Section 6C pertaining to real estate matter dealing with town-owned property.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second, yep.
All right, and do we all vote in favor of that?
Yes.
Okay, so we're now in executive session.
We are not coming back out.
And we're probably not going to take any votes afterwards, so the only thing we'll do after we come back out is to adjourn.
Okay, so we're going to end this?
So, we can end our Zoom, and we'll take a five-minute break to do what we need to do, and be back here.
We paid for.
David, I bet you're still wearing the same shirt you were wearing the last time I saw you at FEDC. I love it. I ball with myself.
You need some tech, Andy? You need some tech?